First, I got a question. Do I gotta be sworn in?
Uh, Santo, do we have to swear in Eddie? Before we uh?
Nah, you can go to the clerk. You've been uh.
Okay.
Appointed as the mayor's designate.
Uh, yes.
Yeah, he has.
Right.
Okay, uh, good evening, everybody. Uh, if we could, while we wait for the room to come uh up to speed, we should have a number of people tonight. Um. Let's come to order and if you could please join me in a salute to the flag. I pledge allegiance.
I do.
Flag.
The flag.
The United States of America. To the Republic. Which is. One nation. All right. Thank you, everybody. Could we have a sunshine announcement, please? Good evening, everyone. Today is Tuesday, January eighteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This is a Jersey City Planning Board meeting with a scheduled five thirty P M start. To adhere to social distancing protocols and best practices imposed by city and state authorities. The city of Jersey City canceled all public in-person meetings until further notice. As a result, this planning board meeting is being held virtually as a video conference that is open to the public. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this meeting has been given to the editor of the Jersey Journal, Jersey City reporter, L S Espialito, and posted with the city clerk on January fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. This meeting was also posted on the Jersey City Division of City Planning webpage and all distribution materials made available to the board were published and available to the public. All right. Thanks, Matt. Can we have a little call, please? Yes. Vice Chairman Gonzalez.
Here.
Commissioner Torres.
Yeah.
Commissioner Takur.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Yeah.
Commissioner Dr. Desai.
Yeah.
Commissioner Gangadin.
Here.
Commissioner Horton.
Here.
Commissioner Lipsky.
Here.
And Commissioner Langston.
Here.
Okay, could we? Showing nine members. Um, so I think we have a, oh, a, a, a good attendance here tonight. Uh, just wanted to note that, uh, though there will be, um, that, that it's in excess of eight. So someone will have to pass on voting on, on the master plan tonight, but I understandable why we have a, a large amount of folks here tonight. Thank you. Gotcha. All right. Thanks. Uh, could we turn staff, please?
I see Liz, Matt, Lindsay, Mallory, and Tanya. Do you guys swear? Any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Thanks, Mike. Uh, do we have any correspondence, Matt? No, no correspondence. Okay, uh, so let's get right into new business. We'll call item seven is review and discussion of updates to the master plan, including the vision, the open space element, and the land use element. Uh, doc, the documents were available for review on our J C master plan website. Formal action may be taken. And, uh, before we really get into this, I do want to ask our attorney, uh, if he could maybe instruct the board, instruct the public on, you know, the gravity of what we're doing tonight. Um, how it differs from other parts of the state and, uh, why this is such a special thing here.
Thank you, Chairman. Uh, good evening, everybody. As everybody knows, the master plan is a very important document. Uh, it's a document that this body is very familiar with. The Planning Division has been dealing with the master plan for probably about two years now. When I say dealing with, they've been, they've been looking at and studying the master plan and, and where the master plan was, was and was going. Uh, as everybody knows from our various applications and litigations, the master plan in Jersey City is an incredibly robust document. It covers some hundreds of pages. Uh, you've heard me make the statement that it is probably the most robust master plan in the state, definitely, if not the country. It has got every possible element. We've dealt with all different sections of the master plan in my tenure here and have continued to add different elements and review different elements. Uh, to that end, we've set up the portal and the website for the master plan specifically. Planning has spent thousands of hours with outside consultants, with the community, with every interested party in, uh, explaining and doing research and putting together information and compiling information and data and this is the the game. Here we are. It's game time. So all the work has been done by planning staff and they are going to present uh, their master plan to us. It is incredibly important to the future of the city and it is the roadmap. So I think that we're at that juncture where we've now done all the homework and the test is here. And we're gonna see, I'm sure, Matt, Tanya, Mallory, Liz, everybody was Lindsay, everybody was up all night getting ready for, for tonight. So Chairman, I think, uh, without further ado, we can mark the notices and we can, we can begin. I will note for purposes of the record, Chairman, that uh, we did receive a letter from an attorney that was interested in the matter on behalf of a client. So I would just like to, to recognize that and I'll allow planning staff to, to address anything that they need to address preliminarily. We'll mark the notice and then we will bring those individuals up at the appropriate time after, uh, we take the testimony and we get underway here. So I just wanna put everybody, uh, you know, on notice of that and we'll mark it at the appropriate time.
Okay. Thanks, Council. So we'll, uh, Santo, you have the notice, you said, right?
So I am in receipt of the notice of affidavit proof of publication. It was sent in accordance with the M L U L. We can mark that as A one for the record and we'll keep that on file as we are required to do. And with that, uh, I see everybody on the screen. I don't have anybody standing in front of the podium as if we were in the room, so I don't know.
It would be me.
Wow. Director.
So, um, in the vein of, uh, a recent passing of our iconic Betty White, um, that's how I, I wrote my opener today. So Commissioner, without further ado.
Okay.
Picture it. February two thousand and twenty. A hopeful group of planners sit down at a table to excitedly talk about preparing a new master plan for Jersey City for the first one in twenty years. The possibilities were endless as far as they were concerned, a chance to help navigate the course of Jersey City that they would take for the next ten years at least. I don't need to tell you what happened next because you already know you lived it. That would be the last meeting where everybody would see each other in person for the next year. The planners assigned to the elements for young, fresh planners without a significant amount of project management experience. And the first obstacle thrown at them would be how to navigate not just one, but three teams of consultants in the midst of a global pandemic. Not just Jersey City, but the entire planet needed to quickly adjust their whole way of doing work and living in a matter of months, if not days. Public outreach to two hundred and fifty thousand people plus to plan for the next ten years of Jersey City is a hard enough task even for the most seasoned planner. But now we were asking them to do it huddily on one foot, blindfolded. This could have been an excuse to try the best we could and give you what we can, whatever we're required to do. Instead, this is the moment our planners specifically, and I'm saying it in alphabetical order, Lindsay, Liz, and Mallory and Erica, as a shout out, adjusted, reassessed, and redefined, along with every other planner in the country, what it meant to create a meaningful, impactful master plan that used innovative ways to reach out to the public and go back to the drawing board every time to see what worked best. The document before you tonight is the result of the hard work of so many people. This includes yourselves, the planning board. Many of you were at a lot of our meetings and you come every month. This includes the mayor and our H E D C director, Anisha Chu gon for the continued advocacy to fund this plan that the city deserve. Be proud of your city, our city, and the work that was put into this. I know I am. And without, uh, you know, further ado, I'm really going to kick it off to the, to the folks who really put all the good work into it tonight, and that would be our wonderful planning staff.
Hey, everybody. Um, just letting you all know how tonight is going to be formatted. We have a couple of pre-recorded videos, so we're gonna start off with the visioning video and then we'll go to the open space presentation. We'll have a period for, um, commissioner comments, questions, and as well as public questions and comments, and then we'll take a break and then go to the land use element and, and do the same with the questions. Um, so I will turn on the visioning presentation. Mallory, anything else you want to say? Are we good to jump in?
Uh, no, I think we're good to jump in just to echo what Tanya said. You know, these consultants have worked really, really hard. Um, so we have pre-recorded presentations, but they are here available to answer questions live um, for the commissioners and the public as well.
Let me know if there's any issues. She'll start talking in a moment.
Hello, everyone, and welcome. We're thrilled to be presenting the Jersey City Master Plan for adoption by this planning board. The first part of our presentation will provide an overview of the master plan vision and the process through which we engage the Jersey City community in the development of the master plan goals and recommendations. We will begin with an introduction to the master plan team, then walk you through our approach and process. We'll discuss the key objectives of the master plan and the community voices whose feedback and input guided our recommendations. Finally, we'll explain how this vision functions to frame the goals and recommendations of each master plan element. Following the master plan vision, the element teams will present the open space and land use recommendations. Jersey City Planning led the master plan update along with our team of planning consultants. A E Com, along with Tanzan Realty, led community and stakeholder outreach and prepared the final master plan vision report. The agency landscape and planning team led the open space element and the B F J team led the land use element. They are both here to introduce their team members and present their work following this presentation. The Jersey City Master Plan Vision seeks to capture the impacts and opportunities that have surfaced through the city's rapid growth, develop a plan that celebrates and strengthens our vibrant community. The master plan will provide a strategic vision and framework for implementing policies and actions in Jersey City over the next twenty years. Ultimately, this framework aims to serve our community by promoting a connected, prosperous, equitable, and resilient Jersey City. Our master plan incorporates and builds upon previous planning efforts. We assessed what worked in the past and how the city has evolved over recent decades and then determined how Jersey City wants to grow into the future. Our approach has sought to unify the various master plan elements into a coordinated and cohesive vision. In addition to reexamining and revising the land use and open space elements and the many components that comprise those plans, our team also incorporated recommendations from the recently updated housing and circulation elements, bike and pedestrian plan, and climate action and resiliency plans. The master plan elements provide goals and benchmarks at all scales of planning. From broad citywide recommendations to ward-based strategies to localized neighborhood level interventions or small area vision plans. You'll hear more about the small area vision plans as part of the land use presentation. These goals and recommendations at all scales are framed by four lenses that provide the guiding objectives of the master plan. To expand and improve local and regional connections across transportation modes in order to increase access to essential services and facilities. To adopt strategic land use policies in order to amplify economic opportunities across the city. To prioritize climate resiliency, updating Jersey City's infrastructure and improving future sustainability. And to emphasize social equity and promote fairness, justice, and equality in our policies and services. Our master plan strives to portray a collective, community-driven vision for the future of our city and robust community engagement was critical to this outcome. The planning team kicked off in March of two thousand and twenty and quickly had to adapt to new protocols for community engagement during the COVID nineteen pandemic. Our team immediately restructured the engagement process to include virtual touchpoints and offer a variety of ways to participate in order to be as inclusive as possible. Outreach and engagement efforts included Zoom meetings with live polling and breakout rooms for small group discussions, interactive digital surveys, and active social media campaign, pre-recorded micro-meetings posted online, and we posted flyers, mailed postcards, and held socially-distanced in-person events outdoors. Our master plan team received feedback that our outreach methods were successful in reaching a wide range of residents who may not have been able to participate in certain events due to time constraints or lack of childcare. The online tools we offered provided opportunities for people to participate at their convenience over an extended period of time. In-person events and traditional handouts, while challenging during the pandemic, did offer community members who struggled to access or use digital technology a chance to have their voices be heard. We received six thousand three hundred and fifteen responses to the need survey, um, uh, going across three different surveys altogether. In October of two thousand and twenty, two hundred and thirty-nine attendees participated in virtual public meetings over two days and forty-one attendees participated in three consecutive outdoor engagement sessions in person. In May of two thousand and twenty-one, during our second round of virtual public workshops, we received, we had two hundred and thirty-nine participants over two days. Through June and July of two thousand and twenty-one, three hundred people, more than three hundred people participated in on-demand workshops. Hundred and twenty-five participants participated in virtual charrettes across the three small area vision plans. And throughout June of two thousand and twenty-one, we, uh, advertised and, and conducted outreach at a number of different pop-up events throughout the city. All in all, the results from the amended engagement program due to COVID nineteen were holistic and represented as many voices as were expected. This was a huge learning and growth experience for all of us, and it's expected to permanently change the way the public engagement is conducted in the future in a positive way.
Trying to work on this.
Before I turn the remainder of the presentation over to our land use and open space teams, I'd like to offer a brief explanation of how the master plan vision functions to provide a cohesive planning framework. Our team first identified the recommendations that were contained within each individual planning element and then consolidated similar goals and recommendations across all of the elements. In this way, our vision is able to address areas of overlap between the different elements. These consolidated goals and recommendations were then filtered, if you will, through the lenses, allowing the final vision to identify the specific recommendations that the city can follow in order to become a more connected, prosperous, equitable, and resilient Jersey City. Thank you very much. I look forward to discussing your questions and comments after the presentations.
Okay, and Liz, if you could, um, I think you might have promoted Lauren, so Lauren, you can go ahead and, uh, yeah, there you are, show your face. Um, so Lauren is just gonna share, um, a slide or two just to talk about these goals and, and recommendations and how we've organized them. I think you all have had access to the larger report, but she'll give a brief summary so people understand how to use the document moving forward.
And Lauren, just before you get moving, I need to swear you in. Okay, you raise your right hand.
Oh, sure.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
For the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Lauren Messier, L A U R E N is my first name, and my last name is spelled M I C I R.
Thank you.
Sure.
Uh, Ms. Messier, good evening. This is Chairman Langston. Um, if you could just give us, believe me, we're not qualifying you at this point, but, uh, if you could just give us a, a history of your background and, uh, the role you played in the master plan process.
Sure. So, um, I am, I am trained, my background is as a landscape architect. Uh, I am a registered licensed landscape architect. I work for the firm A E Com. Um, however, we do, in addition to, you know, all of the actual design work, uh, we do planning and urban design within our studio and I've led a number of planning projects, um, and also community engagement, uh, across, you know, pretty much all of our projects. It's a, it's a heavy component. Um, so, sorry, it's the end of a long day, so I'm not even doing a great intro of myself. Um, so we came on board A E Com, uh, consultant for this project, and our role was to lead, lead community engagement and outreach, um, for the master planning effort and also to pitch in on this visioning process. And so we worked closely with the open space and land use teams um, and also delved into all of the other, you know, previous planning efforts and worked really closely with the city planning team to craft this sort of overarching vision for the master plan.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Sure. Any other questions before I share my screen?
No, go ahead.
Yes. So I've been on a different platform all day, so right here it is for Zoom. All right. Can everyone see my screen now? And you should be seeing a control.
We can, yes.
There we go. Okay, great. Um, so this is not the slide I was planning to show first. Hang on a second. Wanted to start with this one. So as I mentioned in the presentation, um, these, the, the lenses were sort of a strategy that we developed, uh, with, with the whole team as a way of showcasing this vision and show what the lenses do. Um, you know, we were identifying through the master planning effort, a set of shared goals and guiding principles for all of the planning efforts for the future. Uh, the lenses helped to filter these strategies and identify overlaps between all the different planning elements, whether it's open space, land use, housing, resiliency, bike and circulation plan. We know that there's a lot of common goals and common priorities in all of these planning efforts. What we wanted to do with this vision document is unify all of that through these four thematic lenses, which we identified as, you know, connectivity, mobility, economic opportunity, social equity, climate resiliency. And you're seeing a snapshot on the right of some of the core goals and, um, overarching goals that were identified within each one of these lenses. What we did is the process, and that was the complicated looking diagram you saw at the end during the presentation. Uh, let me flip back to that slide I was on previously. Once the open space and land use teams had gone through their more in-depth technical analysis and identified their goals and recommendations, we took a look at those planning efforts and also all, as I mentioned, all of the past, um, plans, which were, each one is organized a little bit differently. Some are identifying what they call strategies, some are recommendations, some are saying goals. So we did a dive through all of these plans to really understand what the commonalities were and what the, the core priorities across all the planning efforts and kind of clustered them into this column that we're seeing here called goals. Some of them are paraphrased or, you know, taken directly from these planning efforts. Um, and these are commonalities. These are broader planning goals that the city has, uh, within each one of these lenses. And then this chart on the right that's organized here and our vision document does go through, you know, each one of these. Um, and these can all be found within the, the individual planning efforts as well, is identifying the more specific kind of action items and key recommendations that can be taken in order to achieve each one of these goals. So that's the way that the, the vision document is structured and also how it relates to the individual planning efforts. And I can stop sharing my screen and go back to are there? Yeah, questions, comments, anything else I can add to or help clarify, or if the planning team had any other points that they wanted to tack on to this? Please chime in.
Um, the only thing I would, I would, um, follow up with is just, I think, a lot of the goals of this specific document are really to create a user-friendly version of what the master plan is um, for yourselves, for the public, for other stakeholders. We understand that, you know, most people, um, trying to understand a master plan don't have time to read through the thousands of pages we have across all the elements. And so this is really kind of the cheat sheet of, um, you know, I, maybe I'm new to Jersey City, or maybe I'm starting a business in Jersey City. What are the goals of the city? Where is the city looking to go in the future? You know, what are the key things I need to understand to see the direction that Jersey City is looking to take? And, um, so I think that that structure of that, um, matrix that Lauren just shared really helps to give you kind of the one-pager version of that. And then the document as a whole really, um, kind of backs up how we got to these goals through the master plan process and past planning efforts. Um, so I think a lot of the content that's covered in that document is content that you all have seen before. It's content that you have voted, uh, you know, to adopt before as part of other plans of the master plan. Um, but if you have any questions on, on anything that's new tonight or the organization of anything, I think, uh, now would be the appropriate time for the commissioners to ask Lauren, and then I think we're holding public comment off until we've gone through the open space as well.
So one question. I just came on the board, uh, last month, about this month. And, uh, but I was on it before years ago, I guess, when, uh, as Tanya said, the, the last, uh, master plan was approved twenty years ago. So my question is, is, is that what consideration was given to the last master plan in terms of assessing or evaluating, um, uh, strengths or weaknesses or successes or areas of needed improvement to sort of gauge how, uh, successful that guidance was and then and, and did it help to guide this new master plan?
Well, that's a great question. Um, one of the exercises that we did through this planning process, um, which is is, is detailed in, in the master plan vision, um, was kind of a timeline exercise. So we, we did look back at the previous master plan, and I think the city planning team also probably had done some of their own assessment beforehand to identify the need for doing this new master plan. Um, but to help us set some of the goals and priorities, we wanted to understand, look to the past and see what worked, what played out well. Um, what can we do a little bit differently? What, you know, policies, you know, had certain consequences unintended or, or otherwise. Um, and so there's a number of spreads in the report about just tracking kind of a timeline over the last number of decades in Jersey City and seeing what the key, some of it ties back specifically to the master plan, but some of it is just what policies have been adopted, what outside forces, um, you know, global trends, things citywide, things statewide have happened that have impacted, you know, growth and development in Jersey City and helping us see where we might need to course correct along the way.
Thanks.
Hey, anybody else? All right. I don't see anybody. Let's, uh, proceed.
I think now we're gonna move on to the open space element. I spoke to Dee Sigmund, the environmental planner with City Planning here. And as you heard earlier, our open space recreation and community facilities element, open space element for short, of the master plan was led by Agency Landscape and Planning, um, along with a few sub-consultants, including N V Five, Stokes, and Barry Dunn, who worked on the recreation piece. Uh, Bree and Rhiannon from the agency team are here today to help me answer any questions, uh, as we go. Um, before we get, once we get to questions, I'm gonna pass it over to Liz now to, to start their video.
Hello. Thank you for having us here. My name is Bree Ensel with Agency Landscape and Planning. And today you'll be hearing about the Jersey City Open Space Element from me as well as my teammates, Rhiannon Sinclair and Abby Jamil. So as we dive into sharing the plan, we want to first give you a quick introduction to the team that created it. Um, then we'll share the vision, the big pieces that tie together, um, and really set a tone for parks and open space and recreation in Jersey City in the future. And then we'll dive into how that vision gets implemented, how it becomes a series of goals and recommendations that can be implemented over time, both by the city, but then in concert with a number of partners. So starting with a quick round of introductions, um, I introduced the agency team. We are leading landscape, landscape architecture and planning for this project, really pulling all the pieces. really pulling all the pieces together. We're working as well with NV5, who's been focused on connectivity um, and thinking about how to make an improved bike and pedestrian system uh, that connects parks and open space and people. We're also joined by Stokes, who's supported uh, engagement during this process in a really nimble way, considering the pandemic um, and has helped us to do some outreach to improve participation. And then lastly, by Barry Dunn, who's really focused on recreation. So concrete ideas that could help to uh, make recreation services and programs work better for the community. The open space element is being completed in tandem with the land use element. These two pieces are really complementary and uh, integrated through this process, together with a lot of other plans that the city has been working on. They add up to the complete picture of the future of Jersey City uh, within a broader master planning effort. I think the biggest foundational element of this, of this plan that we need to start with is a huge thank you to all those who have helped to shape it. Uh, both members of the community, as well as a really long list of engaged stakeholders who showed up even during a pandemic. Uh, to various parks to engage with the plan, give their ideas, found us online and offered lots of different thoughts about what could make the parks and recreation and open space system work better. Um, and then a lot of collaboration within the city and across lots of partners. Um, lots of different departments contributed data, ideas and um, ground truthing of the plan. We were able to work with a great technical advisory council also to really kind of root this plan within the processes that are already happening within the city. Um, and we were driven and informed by a council and constituency representatives group um, that helped connect us to the really important stewards of the parks and open space system in Jersey City. Throughout the plan, because of the pandemic, there were lots of different creative opportunities um, that we tried to use to get the word out and to increase engagement. Um, as we, as we went through, we continued to check and see who we were hearing from and who might be presently underrepresented um, in giving their voice to shape the plan. And so uh, we tried to respond in different ways to increase participation. One of those was to create and mail out a postcard um, specifically to engaging in the open space element. It was mailed to neighborhoods with a higher proportion of underrepresented communities, and it was also multilingual. Um, so the hope is, um, and we saw some increases, that that would help to get broader, more um, equitable participation in the plan. All of that input, um, as well as a lot of analysis, um, and looking at the data on the ground has led to a vision, a comprehensive vision for the open space system in Jersey City. What we heard overall is that people want to see it as a really well-connected, um, beloved and functioning and resilient place. So that means that um, that this plan is going to guide the city as they work. Because you're a very dense community that's really built out and has a lot of things happening within every square inch of the community. Uh, we really want to focus and enhance every square inch that you have, get the most out of it, get the most out of it for parks, recreation and community enjoyment. Um, we also really want to strengthen connections and we know that um, as a city is growing, connectivity becomes more important than ever. Um, so you'll see some recommendations about how to really increase access to parks and connect people safely um, throughout the city. And then finally, increasingly important, uh, the parks and open space system helps Jersey City invest in a resilient future. So this is not just about the resilience of the open space system, also facilities, also neighborhoods, and has a lot of broader benefits. Within each of those kind of vision themes, um, you'll see that we have a variety of goals as well as key recommendations. Those are the actions, um, and the aspirations that will drive and hold the plan together. And that's really what we want to be sharing with you today. When all of those pieces work together, we see that that vision becomes a really great place to live, um, no matter what age you are. Um, no what, no matter what neighborhood you live in, focuses on connecting across major barriers. Um, and we see that that vision is really grounded in those three community-driven themes and thirty-four goals. All of those elements were developed really closely with the TAC, the Technical Advisory Committee, and shared embedded with the community in the Vision Plan Workshop. So we hope that this adds up to a really uh, great opportunities and improvements um, that knit into the land use plan and that really reinforce um, what the community wants to see within their, their system. And now I'll pass it to my colleague, Abby Jamil.
Hello. Thanks so much, Bree. Um, I am Abby Jamil with Agency Landscape and Planning and here to talk to you about our first section, enhancing every square inch. So this first theme um, is meant to describe a philosophy about being strategic and creative about what is possible both on and within the city's land, amenities and facilities. It encourages thinking about what is possible and pushes spaces to be multifunctional. This is the media section of the recommendations containing twenty goals and sixty-one recommendations. As there are many detailed goals within this section, we are only going to focus on a few. The few that we focus on, we feel cover the general aspects of the recommendations. Those goals that we will dig into a little bit deeper are bolded here and they include addressing gaps in access through both acquiring new land and investing in existing facilities, designing parks to be welcoming spaces, reflecting contemporary trends and tastes in open spaces and amenities, and expanding access to programs specifically for low-income households. So diving into our first one, addressing gaps through new land and improved facilities. Our opening goal is to address the gaps that currently exist in parks, amenities and open spaces in two ways. The first way is for the city to acquire new land to create these services. The map on the right uses white spaces with black dotted lines to outline areas of the city that are outside of a ten-minute walk to a park. It is recommended that these neighborhoods and others that suffer from an unequal access to park space be prioritized for investment. I mean, the idea of acquiring new land in parks originated from community members. And our community survey, just over half of our respondents felt that this strategy would help them visit parks and open spaces more often. The second way to address gaps in access is to invest or reinvest in what already exists. So both our dat- or data collection effort and community survey responses led us to conclude that people are not always close to the amenities that they desire. Or that the parks, open spaces and facilities that are nearest to them are in need of improvement. And that both of these aspects dissuade them from visiting what may be close by. So the strategy is to improve what existed, what already exists, um, should be prioritized over land acquisition, which we know is much more comp- much more complicated and often a much more time-consuming process. So tending to and improving what already exists is both financially more efficient and shows a commitment to our existing communities. The second goal is to design parks and open spaces to be flexible, welcoming and accessible. This includes meeting or exceeding universal accessibility standards like wheelchair ramps and widening pathways to increasing restrooms and water access. The graphic on the right shows what this might look like in legacy parks. It includes celebrating and investing in the history of these legacy parks while also accommodating new flexible uses like grilling and electrical hookups. And we can take inspiration from cities like New York City, whose NYC Parks Without Borders program has sought to specifically address the moment where parks meet streets and sidewalks. It has invested in removing fences and gates and redesigned entryways and exits to be much more obvious and much more inviting. These efforts in, indicate that these spaces are meant for all members of the community. The next goal is to reflect the tastes and desires of Jersey, of Jersey City residents and visitors while also paying attention to national trends. For example, there has been a national shift away from baseball-specific fields towards flexible fields that can accommodate sports like cricket, soccer and disc golf. The recommendation for this goal includes engaging nearby business owners and residents during the planning of parks. This will help ensure that nearby open spaces feel personal and reflect the neighborhood that they are within. Recommendations also include programming that represents a multitude of identities, cultures and age groups. Many flexible physical spaces already exist within Jersey City that could host such programs. With some imagination, vacant land, underutilized infrastructure land or public schoolyards provide these such opportunities. The final goal that we will highlight within this theme is to expand uh, city programs for low-income households. It is understood that a park and recreation system as complex as Jersey City's requires a great deal of resources, be they financial or staff. Offering additional free or low-cost programming may be difficult within this current structure. So in order to achieve this goal, we offer a few recommendations. The first is to compare Jersey City to similar cities to understand if there is an alternative fee structure that may work better. The second is to create, strengthen and formalize partnerships with organizations that have both the physical spaces and the resources to host programs. Partnerships with mission-aligned organizations can also fill current gaps in program offerings. Additionally, the city should continue to champion lower-cost and non-traditional ways to offer programming, such as mobile classrooms and pop-up plazas. These examples have really taken off due to COVID nineteen, and many families find that they just generally better suit their needs. So I will now pass it over to Rhiannon, who will dig into our next two remaining themes.
Thank you, Abby. Uh, hello, everyone. Rhiannon Sinclair, excited to share more about strength and connectivity. So this is our second element theme, um, underlying the system of parks, programs and facilities that Abby has outlined within Enhance Every Square Inch are the sidewalks, streets, trails and transit networks that connect people to these destinations. The plan outlines seven goals and twenty-two recommendations to achieve a safe, accessible and equitable network of connections for bikes and pedestrians. So let's dig in. The goals within this theme focus on ways to strengthen connections by building off of the plans that came before us. We also think critically about investing in the greenway system and prioritizing investments to east-west links between the greenway that exists. Today, I'm going to share four goals that reinforce the desire to connect all Jersey City residents safely and efficiently. There are sixteen corridors and intersections in Jersey City with high crash volumes. Every one of these corridors is in, within a few hundred feet of a park, community facility or school. To better protect bicyclists and pedestrians from motorized traffic, we need to follow through with the Jersey City Bike Master Plan and the Pedestrian Enhancement Plan by introducing separated bike lanes and safe crossings, starting with those high-crash corridors. When we think about designing streets for all ages and abilities, we can summarize much of what the Jersey City community shared from workshops and the survey into one word, safety. The data we pulled from the plan process says the same thing. Challenged corridors, conflicts, limited transit access, lighting and unsafe sidewalks, all deter people of all ages from visiting the city's parks and facilities. This goal, to design our streets for the youngest residents, reinforces that universal accessibility is core to citywide connectivity, starting with the city's most vulnerable populations and those living in communities with the lowest incomes and with limited access to city resources. Here, as shown in this example, investments can include new lighting that illuminate sidewalks over streets, mid-block crossings and signalized crossings close to schools, libraries and parks, and clearly-lined roadways to slow traffic and enhance visibility for drivers and pedestrians alike. Working with NV5, we feel strongly that a well-designed street is an important first step to creating safe connections between residents and their favorite destinations. To fully connect residents to their favorite destinations, a concerted effort is already underway to expand transit stations into transportation hubs for bike sharing, wayfinding for visitors and safer pedestrian and bike infrastructure, which is also known as micro-mobility hubs. The plan proposes opportunities to expand the mobility hub network by connecting transit to parks, libraries and other city facilities and prioritize these new hubs in environmental justice neighborhoods. The open space element plan is not a plan for the greenways, but it can help to frame design considerations for our greenways so that our trails and connections better reflect our needs for safe, beautiful and functional trails and crossings. First, we need to confirm a greenway network that connects with the city's river, uh, riverfronts, north and south, um, as well as on-road east and west. We also need to identify um, uh, or develop identity standards for the city's expanding greenway system. So as the greenway system is implemented, it's important for the city to deploy a comprehensive wayfinding system and clear identity to help tell a story about the city, its history and its diverse community. In Indianapolis, as you can see in the images to the right, the cultural trail connects some of the city's least connected neighborhoods via a path, a, a shared path that is separated from cars. The cultural trail uses path materials, signage and plantings to reinforce a consistent identity and make some of Indianapolis's most challenged intersections safe for bicycles and pedestrians. Our last theme um, is invest in a resilient future. So here, we think critically about our rate of ways, facilities and open spaces and how they can contribute to healthier and more resilient communities. Within this theme of the open space element, there are seven goals and twenty-six recommendations. I will walk through four of the seven goals to highlight how the city can set a baseline for climate resilience and adaptation in order to protect the city's most valued assets, its people and its places. When we think about expanding green infrastructure and open spaces, we look to the survey and past workshops. In the survey and past workshops, many of you shared the challenges of flooding during Hurricane Sandy and you reinforced that floods, storms and hotter-than-average days will become more frequent. The city has already done a lot to understand the impacts of flooding and the MUA is working hard to upgrade water systems for major storm events. Still, we'd like to find ways that parks can be part of a strengthened green infrastructure framework while still serving the needs of uh, recreation for our residents. This includes converting parks and open spaces into more multifunctional spaces that continue to support recreation needs and provide stormwater storage during rain events. There are also many ways to adapt what we already have to ensure city facilities and open spaces address community health and wellness, act as cooling centers on hot days and reduce the effects of urban heat island and flooding. Working together with the Climate Action Plan, the city's buildings can serve as resilience hubs that also contribute to lower climate emissions and increased awareness of the city's role in combat, in combating global warming. Uh, lastly, the city needs to lead the way to expand our tree canopy. Shade trees along roads and in parks can reduce the heat island effect in neighborhoods by up to five degrees. An incremental plan to maximize tree coverage could have a multitude of benefits for Jersey City today as well as far into our future. I'm now going to turn it over to Bree, who is going to share more about how the city can prioritize these goals and recommendations. Thank you, Abby and Ree. So you've heard a lot about a variety of different ideas that really add up to that complete vision, um, about kind of investing and enhancing.
about kind of investing and enhancing every space, making sure that the activities that are provided meet the needs of the community, about creating a connected system, safer biking trails, walkability, and about a resilient system, one that can endure amidst different changing weather and the coastal conditions. So it's a lot of different ideas, and we know that all of these things won't happen at once, but that in many ways, a lot of the different recommendations are also reinforcing. And so we've given some thought to how implementation might sequence and how you can start and over time kind of build out the plan so that after a kind of ten or twenty-year spectrum that we might be looking ahead, you've realized your vision. So in the short term, we're looking at getting started, being able to get started on about half of the recommendations. In the medium term, tackling about thirty-five additional. And in the long term, completing the plan with the final few. You can see that throughout the entire duration of implementation, there are a number of recommendations that are ongoing that could happen at any moment or be pushed out a little bit further depending on capacity, opportunity, and community need at that point. So thinking about what might want to happen in the short term, here's a few examples. We know, especially from working with the TAC and the community, that there are a lot of projects that are already underway. A lot of these have to do with some things that are really important to neighborhoods, to those who use the systems, and their basic improvements to parks, open spaces, and rights of way. Oftentimes, those are some of the most critical things to address community need early, and they can be done because they've already been teed up, discussed, and funded through other processes. But these projects themselves really do rely on continued relationships and support, even if they can get started earlier. A great example of this is that in the survey, we heard about the need to scale up the composting program. So it's a program that already has been piloted, tried, has community support, and in the short term, could be implemented by being enhanced and expanded. In the medium term, we're looking at some bigger projects, things that might take a little bit longer to get ready. They're often funded by capital investments or longer-term partnerships. So it takes more work, more time to get prepared to implement these medium-term projects. They need to be put within the budget or a fund raised from multiple sources, and you need to align different partners behind them to make sure that they can succeed, be implemented, and stewarded. These are often going to involve more resource-intensive projects or larger-scale investments in the open space system. Some additional detailed design and planning and community engagement would also be necessary to implement some of these. So an example here of something that might fall into this medium category is something that's been implemented in Harlem, the Grown Impact Farm. And this could be something that you can see is more of a medium-term project, has some capital improvements, and needs to line up multiple partners to make it happen. And looking ahead to the long term, here we're thinking about projects that require advocacy, bigger thinking, additional study, and long-term community investment. So a lot of this would be some of the more comprehensive or multifaceted capital improvements. You can see here how this project that engages the waterfront really hits on a lot of different pieces: water access, connectivity, and programming. But it also means a lot of collaboration and coordination needed with neighbors, with other agencies to think about working in the water's edge. And so ideas like living shorelines in waterfront parks, like in the Morris Canal Basin, really would require a little bit longer lead time, a little bit more work to get under the ground. It doesn't mean that you wait and you don't do anything now. It just means that this might not be implemented until later. And then there's a lot of opportunities for these ongoing projects that can be creatively implemented at various times when opportunities or enthusiasm and momentum shows up. So these could be active projects that happen at various time scales. A retrofit to existing parks and facilities to host more events is a great example. You already have the platform of those places, so it's really just about thinking about layering on programming or additional infrastructure, and these could happen anytime according to community need. So we've shown you a little bit of a picture of how to think about implementation and how all those different steps will add up to the vision, to Jersey City's vision for a connected, accessible, and resilient parks and open space system. And we look forward to seeing the plan implemented in the coming years. Thank you.
All right, so that was an overview of the Open Space Element. I guess if any commissioners have any questions?
Yeah, there was, actually, just one question. It's highlighted in, I don't know, about midway through. There was a bullet point for a Neighborhood Ambassador Program. Do we want to expand on that at all? Do we know anything, or is that just a goal at this point?
Can expand on that if that's helpful?
Sure, and just before you do, I need to swear you in. I don't know if Rhiannon and I could swear you in at the same time, just to keep this nice and clean. You ladies swear that any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, yes.
And then just Bree and then Rhiannon, if you could spell, excuse me, state and spell your name for me, please.
Yes, so my first name is Bree, full name Brianna, B-R-I-A-N-A. Last name is Hensold, H-E-N-S-O-L-D.
And my name is Rhiannon Sinclair. First name, Rhiannon, R-H-I-A-N-N-O-N, last name Sinclair, S-I-N-C-L-A-I-R.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, ladies. Take it away.
Yeah, so I think that thinking there is that Neighborhood Ambassador Program could be a little bit, you know, like a volunteer program, but something that's more associated with the kind of neighborhood parks. We also identified them in the report as the playground parks, the pocket parks, the kind of smaller parks that have a really local catchment area. You know, we know that the community is growing, and there's a need for kind of resources to grow or, you know, parks and open space amenities to grow. But then also that puts more pressure on staff, on maintenance, and we heard that too from the community and awareness of that. So with the kind of, you know, prevalence of active open space advocates already, it seemed like kind of formalizing a relationship with community members to be ambassadors to their local parks could be a way to kind of help to buoy the city staff, the maintenance, and support efforts there. It's something that we saw, and I think the report has an example or a case study from another community of how this has been played out. It can be a really nice way also to give people more stake and ownership in their local park too and say and buy-in. So it kind of has a few different benefits. I don't know if that answers your question about kind of what the intent is. Yeah.
Um, yeah, I think, you know, towards the end of the presentation with the park programming, I think that would be a great, you know, tie-in for some kind of ambassador program. Just the simple fact of, you know, the park that's closest to me underwent a small renovation last year, and it's amazing how many more people are using it. You know, just a few updated benches really could make a difference somewhere. So it's promising. The only other question I have before I turn it over to the rest of the commissioners. So we talk about connected Greenways in the plan. Now, are they just, is that an aside to what we're looking at tonight? Or is that actually going to be part of the master plan, or does that go into a larger program that, you know, city engineering would dive in on?
Yeah, maybe I can start to answer, and we can fill in with additional thoughts too. I think, you know, this plan was looking at connectivity, but certainly the focus of the Open Space Element is on connectivity when it comes to getting people to parks, getting people to community facilities, getting people to schools. And so really focused on those specific community connections, which is an important component of a broader mobility network. So I think it's complementary to a lot of other work that has been done, is being done around the Greenway system, on-street systems, and kind of broader multimodal system. But this plan in particular was focused on, let's get people to parks safely, let's give them multimodal ways to do that, let's take advantage of kind of the waterfront Greenways that exist and some of the regional connections that are being created and advocated for, and let's figure out how that plugs into the park system and the library system. So that was kind of the emphasis here. Ree, anything you would add?
No, I think, of course, on a practical level, there's, there are all of the Greenway plans that have come before this project, before this master plan, and so we both wanted to bolster those, bolster the conversations that have been had within the city as well as by advocacy groups. But this particular project wasn't, Greenways weren't the emphasis of this project. It was merely a way for us to kind of build awareness of them, acknowledge what already exists, and make recommendations about how we can be sure that those Greenways can come to fruition in the future.
Great.
Just to add to that, I think the plan also highlights how the city's parks and open spaces can serve as Greenway destinations throughout this network. And there is a mapping exercise in the plan that does highlight existing and future connections throughout the Greenway network. So I think the plan helps solidify that vision for cohesive network throughout the city that also connects our parks and open spaces.
Excellent. Okay, thank you, everybody. That's it for me on Open Space. Anybody else? Commissioners, any questions?
Question?
Sure, go ahead. Go ahead.
Journal Square area is so much populated, but there is no park in Journal Square. The nearest is Poshingfield or Lincoln Park. So they are building a new courthouse, and the old courthouse that area should be converted into park for the people, you know? That's, that will be so useful for the community who lives in Journal Square. And the second question is, they said they plant five hundred trees a year in Jersey City. How about giving fifty-dollar coupon to people who own the buildings? And, you know, if they plant a tree in front of their house, you know, they get a fifty-dollar coupon.
I think that's a great idea and incentive. We, just to respond to the second part, we heard a lot about the urban tree system canopy. We know that there's parallel efforts happening there too, but certainly from the community, there's a lot of passion for enhancing both public, you know, trees on public land, but then also how do we incentivize private property? So, yeah, it's an interesting idea.
And going back to your question about the courthouse, I think also a really great idea and was something that was core to a lot of the conversations we had during the process, which was that there were so many planned, so many planned projects that were happening either alongside this process or happening kind of before or after this process that we wanted to make sure we acknowledged, but were outside of the control of what the city could kind of actively direct. And one of those planned projects was the Courthouse Park, which is a park that's being constructed close to, adjacent to where the old courthouse was. And that's something that we acknowledged within our recommendations as being an important piece of property that the city needs to be, and this, and the communities and neighborhoods that surround this park need to be very engaged in to make sure that the resulting park and its programs, its design, really meet the needs of the neighborhoods that surround it. Because you're right, Journal Square is very much a park desert right now, and it'd be, it's very important that we take advantage of any open space where we can find it.
Okay, anybody else?
Just one observation, is I've attended a few of these community meetings in the Heights and Journal Square, and listening to this wonderful presentation. The thing I'm not hearing is about sidewalks. I mean, we talk about streets, but sidewalks for two reasons. Is one, I've lived in the city and loved the city all my life, and there are some sidewalks that seem underutilized and some that seem overworked. I can take back to Dr. Sykes' point, in Journal Square, it can get very crowded. And there are other parts of the area, the town, that has sidewalks that are underutilized. So why I say that is that even if we looked at sidewalks to maybe narrow in some sections to make greater access for other, you know, parks or lanes, that's one thing. So, and then just to Dr. Sykes' point about the county park, city park, is there are conversations being had, I know, with our councilman and our commissioner, and there's supposed to be a meeting coming up in the next week or two to see how to really push for that to get done. So my big thing was just the sidewalks.
Yeah, you wanted to say something? I'll just say, I apologize that I am off-screen now. For whatever reason, my computer decided to end its internet connection, but I'm happy to still hear all of you and respond to some of these questions. It's such a good point that you're bringing up about sidewalk access, and it's, you know, it's, it is one of the recommendations that we made in the plan. Of course, we didn't want to go through, I think, all fifty, almost fifty goals, because we would likely be here all night. But I think Goal 22 really speaks to the question that you had, which is ensuring that as upgrades are made to parks, as upgrades are made to community facilities, that we are constantly ensuring that the city street network also includes fully accessible sidewalks, that it includes fully accessible biking and walking facilities to support access between your schools and your parks and your community facility, other community facilities. So it's very important, and I apologize for not including it in our presentation.
No apologies necessary. It sounds great, and I think that's certainly an area. A lot of these sidewalks haven't been touched in decades. So I think that, you know, if we're going to be visionary about it, there are different ways in looking at them rather than a curb and a concrete, you know, ten, twelve, twenty feet, whatever, and look at also utilization. So, good job.
Yeah, only thing I would add to that, I think, is that one of the things we talked about with the plan is that you think of a park kind of, oftentimes parks are thought of as kind of stopping at the sidewalk edge. And so instead, a lot of the kind of design considerations at the back try to look at, thinking of the park all the way from that kind of core green area into the right-of-way itself, all as one space, even if it's governed by different departments, gets into some of the partnership recommendations there so that public works can work together too, and like you're saying, kind of, it's all an amenity.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Anybody else?
Do you have a question?
Sure, go ahead.
When we speak of these, and not at the detail, but when we speak to the other goals and recommendations that were made a bundle in, in a long-term or medium-term basis for some of the larger parks that we have in the city, or some of these parks that plan to do movies and things like that, having special events at these parks. When we have special events at these parks, especially the larger ones, I wonder if in the plan, is there any long-term for having? And I know we don't, we're trying to get away from parking cars to these facilities, but how do we get families to come in different parts of the city that are not close to these type of parks? Families in farther sections of a city that are not close to mass transit? How do we look at some form of way to maybe develop parking spaces or garages in these areas to have this, families can show up, or if not, at some time of fall of, in the plan, to put some type of form of transportation that could come and bring people out of the furthest parts of Jersey City that are not close to those neighborhoods? And meaning, because you have repeated a few times, safely to the parks and safely back home. Is there anything I can add in the plan? What is in the recommendations? That's all I have.
Yeah, good question. I think, you know, we looked a lot at kind of the distribution of the larger parks and that kind of community-scale parks and facilities across the city. And you're right, there's still some gaps in terms of walkability there, which makes sense because you're talking about kind of the larger facilities, not the kind of local access that one might want and need on a walkable basis. So it definitely So it definitely, to me, feels like it's kind of multi-layered. So it fits in a lot to the connectivity strategies. There's some strategies there about transit too, and kind of the linking of amenities to existing transit and access there, as well as I think to a lot of the bikeability and walkability. We did not get into the parking dimension as much. So I think that's a good point, but you know, just could say, you know, maybe, maybe there's some opportunities and we've seen this other places for kind of shared parking that could happen with neighbors or as we're thinking about some of the partnerships with private development too, that you have events for communities happening on weekends or off hours, often those are complimentary. So they're, well, it's not in the plan. I think that's a really good point and could be something to explore.
You've got to understand, if, if we are going to have people cooking at these parks or stuff like that, and I know some of our big parks already have them, but there are a few of them that would just be in development now that only rely on on-street parks and it's kind of like a shame that there's certain events and not just individual family members just came. I mean, it's a great thing that the city did with the bicycle lanes. Because now one day we could see families riding down these lanes safely with their children, you know. Awesome. But, um, yes, very good job and I like the presentation.
Thank you.
Point we can look at other in the city, long-term aspect.
All right, thanks, Eddie. Anybody else? Any questions?
Just Commissioner Horton, a quick question. I think you kind of teed me up a little bit. My question followed a little bit as far as the connectivity for the greenways. As far as public transportation goes, you know, following Commissioner Torres' rendition about families and how they need to be accessible to all these parks. Basically, also has a robust and very active senior population. And I think some of the, you know, publics with remember is that we too like to enjoy the parks, have access to the parks, but a lot of times they're not, you know, walkable, you know, a lot of seniors aren't picking. Though whether or not there's public transportation, I think that's a be taken consideration. Make sure that a lot of our seniors have connections to these parks and kind of maybe not just the one close to them, but could experience all the parks in Jersey City and, you know, have those opportunities.
Yeah, wholeheartedly agree. I think there is one goal, goal twenty-five that really focuses on that link between public transportation and parks, kind of thinking about building on and extending public transit, thinking of the parks and open spaces as key destinations for that. We look to at, one of the factors we looked at when thinking about need and making sure that there was walkable access was looking at low car ownership, as well as looking at older adults and, and that population as needing greater proximate access. So all of those kind of factors into looking at places that were, that were gaps and needed, needed investment. I think those are really good points and, and communities. You're talking about families who have a lot of stuff and kids and, and older adults who, you know, might have accessibility challenges. And so tried to factor all those in by looking at those demographics and making them priorities.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner. Anybody else? Any questions? Okay, so at this point, Liz, if it's okay with you, I'll open up for public comment on the open space and the vision aspect of the plan.
Great. Yeah, and I'll, I'll manage. The hand raises and such.
Okay, great. Thank you. I see one hand up already. If anybody from the public wants to comment on anything they've heard so far. We're just talking about the open space and the visioning part of the plan. We'll get to land.
Merrill Gonchar, she is an attorney and the attorney that had provided the correspondent earlier that I had noted the purposes of the record and will let her place her appearance on the record, but I am in receipt of her letter dated January fourteenth addressed to the board. So for purposes of the record, we are in receipt of her January fourteenth correspondent. And if we could promote her and at least allow her to place her appearance on the record.
Sure.
You're on mute, Merrill.
Thanks. I know. Thank you. Just takes me a while to figure out the buttons. I just wanted to clarify that this is, it's Merrill Gonchar. I'm with Sills Commiss and Gross and I represent the owner of the Newport Center Mall. So I just wanted to be clear, we didn't want to miss an opportunity. Following these comments, there will then be a presentation similar to what's been presented on the land use element. Is that accurate?
Yep, that's correct.
Okay, all right, then. We do have a presentation in connection with that, so we will reserve our, our right till you reach that. Thank you.
Thank you, Council.
Thank you, Council.
Okay, once again, if anybody wishes to comment, I see hands raised already, but if you wish to comment on anything you've heard so far tonight, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand. Promoted Charlene.
Gonchar, are you going to want us to bring you back up when we get to the land use element then?
That's what I understood. Yeah.
Okay.
Did I unmute myself?
Yeah, hi, Charlene.
Hi, Charlene. Are you able to turn your video on?
Uh, yes.
Great.
Sorry, hold on. Just bear with me. Uh, host is, oh, okay.
All right, and I just want to swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand.
Certainly.
Swear any testimony you get tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Charlene Burke C. H A R L E N E.
We have five minutes for you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Has the city council seen this as of yet? May I ask, just to start? So then, one of the things I would like to say about, a recommendation should be, I believe that for every say, one thousand residential units that are being built in Jersey City, that there be a corresponding amount of parkland that must be created because we're doing a vertical city now with our high rises. And unfortunately, in downtown, certainly, we've realized that there has been no parkland really created to to account for all of the children that are now down there. And they're overrunning Hamilton and Van Vos Park to the point that they are maxing out not only the playgrounds, but even the turf, the grass that's in the parks. It's unfortunate that that is not even planned for in the long run. Doing taller buildings, I really think that there has to be city commitment to more parkland for every one thousand units that are being created. In addition, some of the things, because I'm a member of the Jersey City Parks Coalition, is that we need Jersey City to invest in training their staff, their park staff appropriately on maintenance and particularly landscaping. And even right now, we are not, we have, I think, a temporary arborist or an on-call arborist because our other arborists have left. But when there's a recommendation for making a tree canopy, we need the appropriate people with the knowledge that can continue to care and make the successful investments. Otherwise, we just don't see, they die, wither, go away, then cut down and gone. And I really think that we need as the city to max, to match our investments with educated. And I just want to know if Jersey City City Council has seen this yet.
All right, thank you, Ms. Burke. Liz, you mentioned, I'm not sure if you mentioned on record or it was before we started the meeting, that city council has been updated throughout the process, correct?
Yes, they have. We've had periodic meetings with, with the council members. They've also had time to review documents and provide comments along the way.
Okay, but for the public's clarification, this is a planning board document. This does not need city council approval. This is our wish list for the next ten to twenty years.
Yeah, this, this just lives with planning board, does not need to go to council.
Uh, Ms. Burke, I, I totally agree. I agree on all your points. I, I think most of those would be addressed at city council. I don't think we'd be able to do that in the master plan. It, it's, those are very specific things and I, I agree, we need those things. But the master plan itself isn't set up to be that specific in my eyes.
But it cannot create a ratio of creation of parkland to an amount of new residents, because right now we're in a tremendous deficit as far as parkland goes. I mean, Jersey City has been that way for years. That's it. So, I mean, there could be a recommendation that says, you know, for additional one thousand residents or every five thousand residents, one acre of parkland should be, in fact, set aside within that ten-minute walking circumference.
I, I, I agree.
That could be a recommendation.
I hesitate to put a solid number in the master plan for it. I think city council could definitely put a number on it. But I, I would hesitate as the planning board, as this plan evolves. You know, the last plan is twenty years old. They, they typically should be done every ten years. So that you know, may have outlived its usefulness by this point. That's why I hesitate to put a specific number on there. I think it should, those numbers should come from city council. But I definitely, we should have some kind of mechanism that, you know, pushes open space to areas that need it.
Okay.
Chairman, I would just like to also add, I see Lindsay's unmuting too. She's probably saying the same thing, but part of the exercise was in, in gaps analysis and an inventory that the agency team did and they actually looked at where Jersey City falls in several metrics of open space in comparison to other cities around the country. So we might be able to just touch on that to give a sense of how much open space we have compared to other cities around the country.
Okay, thank you.
Right, that is exactly what I was going to say, is that the plan does highlight the overall acreage of parkland compared to similar sized cities. Does highlight that there is a need for additional open space based on Jersey City's population. And while we didn't put that exact number to it, we did highlight not only creating new parks where there is a gap. So areas that are not within a five or ten-minute walk to park or open space, but also highlighted areas that are experiencing increased population growth. So the parks that once are certain neighborhoods, they'll be getting overcrowded or do not reflect the needs of the neighbors moving in. So I don't know if we really wanted to jump in, think those parameters were based on so many acronyms, the NRPA, best practices and also the trust for public land based on similar sized cities.
Yes, that's exactly right. We looked at the National Recreation and Park Association, kind of park metrics that would give a sense of how Jersey City compares. And, you know, one thing that is interesting that we saw is that coverage and access when it comes to kind of geography and walkability because of small parks is really, really high and really good. I think it's about ninety-four percent. But there are still some gaps. And then as Charlene and others have pointed out, there's places that are really growing and feeling growth pressure. And so those have been identified in the plan. I think we heard about Journal Square as one of them, Greenville, the West Side and Hilltop also as places where there's gaps today and kind of thinking about new land acquisition and improvements to existing, kind of working hand in hand. We also looked, because of the, you know, the, the scarcity of large land and development opportunities that a large park might need, we also looked at vacant land partnerships, possibilities of using kind of lots in other public facilities to do double duty. So wanting to find a lot of creative solutions for ways to infuse more parks and open space and amenities within both growing areas, gap areas as the priorities, but then the city as well.
All right, thank you. Promoted Kern Weisman.
Sure. Hi, Kern, I'll swear you in. You swear any testimony you get tonight will be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
The record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, it's Kern, K E R N, Lessin Weisman, W E I S S M A N.
Thank you.
Mr. Weisman, good evening. Always a pleasure. We have five minutes for you.
Oh, great. Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I appreciate the time here. This will be quick. I just, I, I want to just touch again, Charlene touched on it. I want to just get some clarification around the idea of maintenance, right? So my biggest gripe about how we do open space in Jersey City is that we plant trees, as Charlie mentioned, then they die or even the parks, we get renovated and then they get destroyed because and stop functioning because they don't work, you know, because there's no maintenance. So my, so my question really is, is there a way? Is there a mechanism through planning and through, you know, through the planning board, through planning department where maintenance can be called for? I, I know that you guys don't have the authority, like city council does, to pass an ordinance or to fund, you know, maintenance and to add a maintenance, you know, funding and, and restructure how maintenance is done, which all needs to happen. But can you at least maybe in the master plan call for it? So that you can be referenced by the, by the citizenry, so it's, you know, myself and RNA and different groups can call and say, look, the master plan is not just saying create open space, not just saying plant trees, but it's also saying that they have to be maintained. And here's the basic structure for what needs to be done. So you're not, you're not necessarily funding it, you're not necessarily, you know, you're voting on how they're going to do it, but you're saying this is what needs to happen. I've seen this in other plans. It's made a little bit different way, but I know New Jersey, these were not New Jersey cities that I was looking at. So New Jersey law is a little different. So I'd love to get some feedback on that because I, I got to tell you, as a, someone who lives down the street from the park that was recently renovated, the maintenance is, is absolutely atrocious. And I don't see a lot of that being addressed very much.
Great point, Kern. Great point. Yeah, I totally agree. I, we're talking about the same park here and I hope nobody's throwing a dime in that fountain today. Because it is disastrous if somebody throws a dime in that fountain.
Chairman, is it permissible to ask Mr. Weisman if he could supply us any of those references that he's come, come across out of the area? So it was to be able to.
The, the, the problem is that, is that they're not New Jersey City, so I, so I don't know how applicable they would be under New Jersey MLU, you know, so I, I, I don't, I don't want to assume anything. So my question is, you know, can, 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 whether it's done now or it's amended later by the same planning board and, and planning department. I, it, you know, it would be helpful when we're asking city council to say, hey, you need, you know, we, the citizens that voted for you would like you to do this. It's very helpful to point to something that planning and the planning board have voted on to say it's supported by these experts. You know, that, that's a very effective way to to potentially get things done. That, that's what I'm trying to address.
All right, thanks, Kern. Yeah, I think it's, it's definitely worth exploring. It's an interesting idea. We certainly can look into the legality of it right here and now, but I, I'd definitely be open to, to you know, reexamining that in the future, definitely. It's a great point.
Point, I will point out, one of the goals is to build only what can be officially maintained, efficiently maintained. And some of the recommendations under that relate to increasing staff capacity to effectively maintain fields, parks and playgrounds to a citywide standard. Also, one of the recommendations is to complete a staff capacity study to evaluate capacity against current inventory programming and maintenance tools. So while this is in the maintenance plan, one of the recommendations is to delve deeper into the maintenance issues for parks and open spaces in the city. So thank you for, for bringing that up.
And that recommendation, Lindsay, if I may, that recommendation came out of that same peer benchmarking study that we did to analyze other park systems across the country, including some park systems in New Jersey, similarly sized cities. To understand not only how much park space is there and how well distributed is it, but also what levels of staff do they have to maintain it? And it was there that we originally found that Jersey City was understaffed and that there are opportunities to expand staffing if possible.
And, and just one point to what you said, Lindsay, it was very critical. What is that standard maintenance, you know? Stand, what is the standard of maintenance for Jersey City to adhere to? Because one of the things I've been asking for, just as relevant to this is you know, to the Parks Department, DPW, you know, where, you know, Well, you know, to the Parks Department, DPW, you know, where, you know, Parks Department, where's your checklist, you know, so the guys go there and I know Becky often has been. Saying this before I even moved to the Heights and it's like, where's your checklist? Like, there's no standard, apparently. I've even gone to the. One of the supervisors at the park and they don't have any checklist. They don't have anything that they're referencing. And just so it's training, it's checklist, it's those things. So I I appreciate that that standard has to be developed and that can be called for. So I I do appreciate that. Because really, it's like, how do you expect someone to maintain if they don't know what they're doing, you know? So anyways, oh, I I wanna go with my time, so.
Resetification from a legal standpoint, the purpose of our document here this evening is to point these things out and hopefully. Those departments that are responsible for. Things such as park policy and upgrading and staffing and maintenance, et cetera. They see what we've recommended. And they address those issues in in their department, but obviously, as we all know. Uh. You know, the. The planning division and this body is limited in what it can do, and then it's for those departments to. To further those those recommendations or to move on those recommendations. So. Everybody in the city should become. Familiar and every department in the city should become familiar with this document and how it. Relates to their department, impacts their department. Or analyzes or recommends anything within their department. Uh. And then they they are obviously going to have to take those steps, but that's. That's beyond our jurisdiction as a board and and really beyond our ability uh. As a board, so.
Really quick, I just wanna follow up with one of the things I would just offer to the board and the public um as part of this exercise is that. Um, you know, I can attest as Lindsay's cubicle partner, cubicle neighbor, uh, how many calls a week she gets for. Um, you know, just a parks inventory and up until this effort, we did not have an accurate parks inventory in the city, you know. Information was held in pieces in different divisions and I think. We think of that as a baseline of a city of our size, but just having, um, you know. Agency lead this effort to do a full inventory and then go a step further of doing a gaps analysis. So we understand how and where. Geographically, numerically, um. We do fall short and where we should look to improve is is going to uh help drastically and how other departments make decisions moving forward. So I think that's one of the most valuable things we can look at, you know, as a part of this plan, not just the recommendations, but just having a very accurate understanding of where we are today.
All right, thanks.
Uh, Ms. Chairman, can I just add one brief quick. To Mallory's point and then um. And to address counsel, right, yes, uh, departments should read these things. Maybe they do. Maybe they don't interpret them a certain way that the public understands them. So with that being said. Uh, Miss Sinclair, you said you've seen uh other documents from other towns. Maybe in having reviewed it, if there was any language that you saw that would be comparable to what Mr. Weissman was looking for. That might be helpful and then council could review it for its uh legal uh consideration. Thank you, Chairman.
All right, thank you, Commissioner.
I see no arm bruster. Hi, Bill. I just wanna swear in before you speak, okay? If you raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you get tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Bill, B I L L, Armbruster, A R M, B R U, S T E R.
Thank you.
Mister Armbruster, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Okay, thank you all very much. Uh, I'll try to be brief. Uh, I'm Secretary of the Journal Square Community Association. I also chair. It's a green committee which focuses on parks, sustainability, and trees. Um, ju- just a couple of points uh I I wanna make. Uh, first of all. The courthouse park, uh, Dr. Desai raised a question about that. The city and the county signed an MOU. Uh, a few years ago for this, but that's non-binding and it's really critical that that be converted into a binding agreement. Uh, secondly, for Bergen Arches, and I know. Very well that that is owned by the state, but I I wonder if the uh planner is considered. Uh, or it's owned by New Jersey Transit and I know the mayor has spoken with the governor and the governor's chief of staff several years ago about that. And it didn't really get anywhere, but you know, did did you consider that? Thirdly, uh, I wanted to ask uh Liberty State Park, obviously, it's a state park. And it it's just a wonderful park, but one of the problems is the lack of accessibility. I mean, the light rail has a station there, but. Even if you can get to that light rail station, uh. You know, you still have a a good long walk to get to the interior of the park and. I I don't know if you consider it at all, what can be done to make Liberty State Park actually more accessible. And um. Finally, on uh green infrastructure, this is vitally important. We had a meeting with uh. The mayor and uh Joe Cunha last uh June. And uh, you know, it it turns out that there is very little green infrastructure being planned in uh. At least Ward C, uh, the Journal Square area. And and I would implore you to try to make sure that green infrastructure is actually incorporated. And I guess finally, I just wanna second the points made by the previous speakers, uh. Kern Weissman and Charlene Burke about uh maintenance and uh trees. Uh, there's a tree in front of my building that wasn't properly maintained. It was planted a few years ago. In in January rather than during the fall or the spring and it it. It died. So thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mister Armbruster.
Uh, we can't hear you, Ree.
Sorry about that. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
I said a lot of very smart things. Um, thank you, Mister Armbruster, um, for the for those questions. I think all of them are are really important. And uh really good questions um to, I might jump around a little bit, um, and let me know if I've missed anything, but I think um. Regarding um. Kind of reclaiming some of those corridors like Bergen Arches or like the Sixth Street Embankment, those are, those were all really. Um, those are really important plans that have come before this one that we um as part of this planning effort sought to leverage and. Um, and take advantage of as much as the city can, um, knowing that they, there are so many complexities with those plans as well as with. The courthouse plan, um, so I'll look to the city to help us answer um some of those questions about how do we give more teeth. To them as we get closer to opportunities for land acquisition or for partnerships, um, but they're part of the plan, so I think. It's it's written and it's acknowledged as part of the the ten to twenty year vision there. Um, and then um as it relates to um thinking about. Uh, opportunities to to connect via green infrastructure, one of um, and it. I think we could have done a better job to acknowledge this in our presentation. Um, one of the kind of core tenants of this of this plan was to. Um, to invest in resilient systems, um, to do more work to um. To protect and adapt not only to challenges around flooding um and and those bigger events like Hurricane Sandy. Um, but also to think critically about um smaller rainfall events that um cause um flooding damage in people's basements. Um, and create um, uh, unplayable surfaces on on fields and in parks. Um, and so that that was its own chapter as part of this project and um is extremely important. And I think it it points back to a lot of. Issues around maintenance and and around the design of those spaces, but um in conversations with MUA, in conversations with the community, everyone. Is on board with wanting to expand green infrastructure citywide, um, and so this plan supports that as well.
Thank you, and a- access to Liberty State Park and.
Yes. Oh, Liberty State Park. Sorry, I didn't mean to miss that one. Um, so there was a parallel effort um happening uh with the state in Liberty State Park and what. Was really amazing about that that process happening at the same time as our own. Um, was that we were able to participate in community meetings and they were able to participate in some of our community workshops. Um, and we also had the chance to share a lot of information about what we learned from surveys. Um, and from our own analysis of um of how spaces are accessed and where there might be barriers. So we've um, we've acknowledged that access is a is a major problem, especially um because of. Kind of the various different types of infrastructure that pass along um the western edge of Liberty State Park. Um, with the state and they've acknowledged receipt of that. And I think we all are in agreement that is extremely important to expand access, especially because. Your most socially vulnerable communities, um, your neighborhoods that have the highest need for access to those kinds of spaces is greatest. Um, so that's, I think, a really good point that you've that you've brought up, that access is important.
And Bill, to supplement that, I would just offer that the vision document um does also speak to um the goals that. You were referencing with Bergen Arches. Um, so one of the things that vision document really sought to do was. Uh. Promote projects that kind of cross disciplines or elements, and so that's just as much of a transportation initiative for us as it is an open space initiative. Um, so if you look at that document under uh connectivity mobility goal number two. Which is prioritize connectivity between neighborhoods, we have a recommendation to reclaim legacy infrastructure to fill gaps and we identify. Projects such as the Bergen Arches and the Sixth Street Embankment as opportunities for us to fill connection gaps. Um, from neighborhood to neighborhood and and east to west particularly.
Okay, thank you, everybody. All right, let's move on. We still have a few hands raised. If anybody wants to speak tonight on uh the open space aspect. Uh, if you could, please raise your hand. And if you're calling in, once again, raise, uh, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Hi, we have um Ms. Jean Daly.
Hi, Jean. Are you able to turn your video on?
Oh, yes, I am. I just.
There you go. You're doing as I was saying it. I just wanna swear, raise your right hand.
Oh, yes.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God, yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Sure, my name is Jean Daly. It's spelled J E A N N E. Um, Daly is spelled D A L Y.
Thank you.
Ms. Daly, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Very good. Um, and just tell me when to shut up when my time's over.
Nicer. I'll put it nicer than.
It's like, keep it, I can think of other things. Nevertheless, um. No, I'm I'm kind of a stickler for detail, so I, when I was looking at the. The written presentation. Um, and I saw under findings, it was actually page seventy under findings. They have, there's a quote from an attendee. About ex- looking for more parks around Exchange Place, saying that the closest one is Newport Green. But since I live in the area of Exchange Place. There are closer parks. There are Four Corners Parks, Peninsula Park, Van Vors Park. They are all closer than Newport Green, so. Um, and in fact, uh, Hamilton Park is equidistant. As is Newport Green from Exchange Place, but that does bring me back to my. My really the focus of what I'm interested in, and that is Exchange Place itself, because. One thing I've noticed, I didn't seem that was addressed. With the plan itself is. Open public gathering spaces. Uh, doesn't seem to have been picked up upon or addressed, but that is very crucial for Jersey City, especially because. Of the terrific variety of cultures we have here and that we can celebrate here. Um, formerly, that used to be an exchange place. In the plaza there, we had Indian, we had house parties, we had Caribbean Day, we had Irish. Um, Colombian, Peruvian, all sorts of wonderful Puerto Rican, all sorts of wonderful events that. Are no longer held there. And the reason they're not held there is because the Exchange Place Alliance kicked them out. Uh, this is very disconcerting to me because we really should look at what are our open spaces, which we. Typically, and used to congregate and share our experiences. Um, the one reason Exchange Place was so wonderful is because you also have transportation. You've got the light rail, you have the bus, you have the path trains. Um, it was a great area and it's becoming less so, specifically because of this move, which I think is. I personally, I find it racist that they're kicking out all these wonderful events that we've had, and I miss them terribly. Um, so that brings me to ask. Because I'm sure you're aware that coming up soon, there's going to be a quote unquote pedestrian plaza built there. Um, it's under the guise of a park. But if you read the details of it. It is no longer going to be the open public space that we once all used and enjoyed. On the waterfront, no less, with a beautiful background and the breeze. Um, it's going to be a converted into a forty percent of Exchange Place. It's gonna be converted into a private corporate roadway. You read that in the in the pedestrian plaza ordinance for that area, and that's what it says. A private corporate roadway. So the balance of it. Is gonna be corporate landscaping. And to what end? We lose our open public gathering space, we lose our ability to access the waterfront, it's gonna visually be impaired. Um, so. I guess my question is, why would you just hope that someone could note that? We're losing our a great spot that we had. And we can still have it if some type of provision is made to maintain our open public gathering spaces and restore them. To what they used to be. Anyone who was familiar with Jersey City knows that's where it all went down to celebrate. Um. And the other areas don't have that type of um transportation access. So that's one thing that's very, very disconcerting to me. Um. There's other things I could say, but I'll keep it, I'll keep it at that because there are other people who wanna be um speak. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Daly. We appreciate it.
Promoting Deborah Taliano.
Oh, Matt, I was actually able, I was actually able to get Joyce.
Okay.
Let's see if Joyce, hey, Joyce, are you there?
Hold tight, Deb.
I see Joyce putting her camera on. That's great.
Hey, Joyce.
Hi, Joyce, you just gotta unmute for us.
Patience. Sorry, we were having some issues making you a panelist.
I'm sorry, did you, so this is David Taliano. Did you want me to hold back?
Yeah, if you could please wait um for Joyce. Thanks.
Okay, and you can't have, you can't hear me, right?
I can hear you. Great, Joyce. Thank you. I just wanna swear in before you speak, okay?
Yes.
Here is your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
So help me God, yes.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Joyce Willis, J O Y C E. W I L L I S.
Thank you.
Ms. Willis, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Okay, I just wanted to uh, the panel to take into consideration uh over um. What do you call it? Um, uh, overpass to get to Berry Lane Park. I've been watching, because I I live in the area, I'm right on Randolph. So I've been watching, I've been stuck in the traffic on Garfield Avenue, and I've noticed. The kids will get to Union Street, they'll press the button. And the lights will flash wanting the the uh motorists that someone wants to cross. Uh, but they don't care. When I stop for people, for kids. The cars usually go around me and then they have to jam on brakes. And also. The platform with the elevator on the Garfield Avenue Light Rail Station. It's broke, it's it it doesn't work a lot of times. So what the kids are doing, they're going around, coming, running down Union Street. Not pressing the button and just running into the traffic. It's dangerous for the children that are trying to get over into Berry Lane Park. So I'm just asking if you guys can consider putting in there. A walkway so they can cross over Garfield Avenue. The traffic gets heavy sometime, and you know, kids, they wanna get to the park. So that's, that's what I wanted to say.
All right, thank you, Ms. Willis. Um. I guess that would be, uh, we'll try and forward something to city council about that.
I already spoke to my last council person. I told him that a few times. He's observed it himself because his business is right there.
Yeah.
He's observed it too, but.
Okay, um, yeah, we'll see if we can pass that along to the. The proper people. Um.
I'd appreciate.
Your new council person.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Ms. Ms. Willis, can you um shoot me an email? Uh, so I'm Tanya M at J C N J dot org.
Okay, okay. Yeah, I will. Okay.
And yeah, I wish those those blinking lights, I wish that was a problem that. You know, was only isolated to that area. That's that's citywide right now. Um, nobody stops for those things and and we really. Desperately need enforcement there. Okay, anybody else? Sure.
Hi, Deborah, are you able to turn your video on? There we go.
Yeah, there we are.
I just want to swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand.
Surely.
Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Thank you, Deborah, D E B R A, Italiano, I T A L I A N O.
Thank you.
Ms. Italiano, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Thank you so much. So this has been terrific. Really appreciate this presentation. You know, looking forward to it for some months now. Yeah, the distillation of, you know, where we're going with green infrastructure in Jersey City is of most interest to me. I'm the president of Sustainable Jersey City. Ten-year-old nonprofit Community Green Team Initiative. We started with green infrastructure over the last couple of years. We really spent a lot of time on focusing on the receding tree canopy. You know, it's one of those funny things where I, and I don't understand entirely how municipal planning would connect the dots on this, but urban forestry somehow falls, if we're looking at streetscapes, somewhere between, you know, land use and open space. So I'm most concerned with the trees on the streets. You know, we've talked a lot tonight about greenscapes in parks. You know, if we were to sort of bend our imaginations a little bit and think about, you know, as they say, in terms of what's the largest piece of real estate in any municipality, it's the combination of streets and sidewalks plus green roofs. So why wouldn't we think about if we're trying to consider enhanced green infrastructure, which doesn't always include trees when we talk about flooding, it's mostly about some of these sort of streetscape engineered, you know, opportunities, rain gardens, bioswales, et cetera, but it's not always and trees. And I'm thinking that the, you know, tree canopy, which is receding at an unprecedented rate in Jersey City, you know, it's been, you know, lost at the rate of more than almost six and a half percent now over the last five years. If we only look at parks, which is not always where people are or quality of life happens. But if we integrate the idea that, you know, streetscapes are an opportunity to, you know, bend our imaginations around open space, you know, with all of those pocket opportunities, if you will, and to look at, which was the last item that was presented here tonight in terms of trees, where we might want to restore those opportunities for some quality of life aspects, that would be of interest to at least, you know, all of my constituents. So that's a big interest of mine. What Charlene and other folks had mentioned here about maintenance, it seems to be a huge challenge for the city to maintain our green infrastructure and our tree canopy. So as she suggested, recommendations coming from, you know, the planning board, because some of these conversations seem a bit siloed, where very great work is happening in every corner of the city. The dots are not always necessarily connected to mobilize good ideas and good planning. So stuff falls between the cracks. It's of concern. Right? So one of the things that we're moving forward with this spring, frankly, with the funding of the planning, excuse me, of the Health and Human Services Division for the city is to update the tree canopy assessment work that was done by the Environmental Commission five years ago. So with that new information, I'd like to thank, turned over to you guys and have that be integrated into the master plan amongst some other work that has been looking at the deficit of the canopy and those impacts, call it the urban heat island effect, call it flooding. I mean, oftentimes when we talk about flooding in the city, what we're not including is urban forestry as an offset. We're just talking about some of the other, you know, remedies around green infrastructure. So I'm not sure where, I guess my bottom line question is, urban forestry falls. If what we want to do is restore the Jersey City tree canopy, which is in an endangered state right now, where does that come out in terms of your work to look at the master plan from an open space and land use element?
All right. Thank you, Ms. Italiano. That was your five minutes, but we'll certainly.
That's it. That, that's my question. If anyone can answer.
I'm sure somebody can answer that. I hope. I do know there, there is language in the master plan about tree canopy, about street tree canopy. Maybe it wasn't highlighted here tonight. Maybe somebody could address that.
I can comment a little bit. I think I totally agree with, you know, everything you said. And oftentimes, we see that too, that the interface between streets and parks and facilities is not worked out and some things fall behind, between the cracks. And that's, that's really common, needing to think about kind of the infrastructure more holistically. There's a goal in the Plan Thirty Two that really focuses on expanding tree coverage throughout the city. And the, the kind of very first point is that that needs to be a collaboration amongst different departments, the Office of Parks and Forestry, of Sustainability, the Shade Tree Committee, and other efforts, because you're right, it's really something that has multiple homes rather than one, and needs to be fostered by a lot of different, different partners. And then tries to talk about how, you know, when you're expanding and maximizing the tree coverage in parks and community facilities, that it's also taking into account the adjacent public right of ways. So the street trees. So hopefully that that gets at a little bit of kind of alignment with your, your goals as well. But that ties to heat island effect and, you know, needs to be thought of in terms of tree health and succession planning, all those different factors. So hopefully, I think, I think it's part of this plan. I think, like you said, it also requires other efforts to by other departments, other plans as well.
Yeah, I'll also just chime in that throughout the process, you had engaged within the technical advisory committee with all those different agencies within the city. So there's this continuity of conversation and understanding on their side. I do see we have one more attendee who'd like to speak. So Teresa, I'm going to promote you to panelist and then you can ask your question or make a comment.
And once again, anybody else, if you'd like to comment, please raise your hands. Comment solely on the open space aspect tonight. Not tonight, right now, I mean, we'll be hearing the land use portion of the presentation after a short break. And again, if you are calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hand.
Teresa, I'm sorry, I'm having a hard time promoting you to panelist. Can you try? Oh, there you are.
She's on.
Teresa, you can unmute and start your video. Teresa, are you there?
I think she's on as, as an attendee. She is in a panelist right now. Can we promote her as a panelist?
I see her.
My, yeah, my guess is that we weren't able to promote her as a panelist, but she was given permission to speak as an attendee. We've asked her to unmute. Teresa, if you're having some issues, you can also call in from a phone.
I just removed the permission to speak, but try that again. With Joyce, she like lowered her hand and then raised her hand and then I was able to get her in.
Okay, so Teresa lowered her hand. If we could, can we try and promote her without her hand being raised?
Oh, yeah. I can. I don't know if that was just something that randomly worked with Joyce, but it's not working right now for me with Teresa.
She's showing us promoted on my screen. She's showing us a panelist.
Okay.
For me, sometimes if there's an older version of Zoom, you can't promote someone as panelist.
I updated mine just before this meeting. But maybe her version.
Teresa, if you could, I'd like to direct you to, to making a phone number or call in. The phone number is on the first page of the agenda. Once you get back in, you can hit star, what is it, nine? Nine is to raise your hand. And we'll, we'll make sure to capture your comments. Okay, is anybody else here from public that wishes to comment on the opening, open space aspect? Okay, see Mr. Pesson with his hand up?
Matt, I'm trying to promote Sam and it's not working. Are you able to promote him?
I'm having the same difficulty.
Huh. Okay, let's see. Okay, I see him popping up.
He's a panelist now.
Okay, can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, thanks.
And I could see you now too. I just want to swear you in before you speak, okay? If you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight is going to be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes, so help me God.
And can you state and spell your name for me, please?
Sam Pesson.
Thank you.
Uh, Mr. Pesson, good evening. We have five minutes for you.
Okay, I want to thank all the planning people for working on this long-term plan. My father was a councilman from sixty-nine to seventy-seven, and Morris Pesson's also the father of Liberty Park. And he was the chair of the Historic District Commission for a while. And so I have that legacy of a dedicated urban advocate as, as you all are. I just want to make the comment, and I may have missed this in the presentation, about the importance of open space, green, grassy lawns. So what's of course important are active recreation facilities. The ball fields, the Little League place for soccer. We have those around town and more needed. And actually, there's going to be sixty-one acres of active recreation created in Liberty Park. But in neighborhoods, that's what we're talking about, is having quality of life, walkable, you know, bikeable places near where people can go or to take a quick bus ride. So we need ball fields, basketball courts, tennis courts, like at Lincoln Park. And also, we need playgrounds for children, the plastic and what else they made of these days, plastic playgrounds and metal playgrounds. But we also need just open space lawns for unstructured active recreation. What I've seen over the years at Lincoln Park or at Liberty Park or choose-up games of elementary school kids or high school people or adults playing softball, baseball, football, volleyball, cricket, soccer. I remember one July fourth, when I was invited to join in with Eliu Rivera, the executive director of Paco, who was having a softball game on on a lawn by the Mars Canal with his family and friends. And so, and sometimes, you know, I've heard a couple of local park people speak about in their local parks, there's sort of not really a conflict, but there's people who want to use it for unstructured active recreation choose-up games. Or people who just see it as just a lawn, you know, to lie on a blanket and have picnics and that sort of thing. So if someone could address and maybe it would entail the city, like spending money and buying, not by eminent domain, but by buying some space that's on the market and say, okay, there's not going to be building here. This is going to be an open space lawn. So that's the comment I wanted to make, that that, you know, we, we need to save or buy lawns, grass for people to play in, within an, with, with choose-up games and also parents and kids throwing a ball, throwing a football and flying a kite, that sort of thing. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Pesson. We appreciate it. All right, I'm sure somebody can address that.
I can make a couple of comments. I think that's a really important point and something that came through in the engagement a lot, this that, you know, both about open lawns for just sort of pickup games and casual active sports, but also just flexible passive areas, you know, places to appreciate a view, be in the shade like you said. So there's a couple of ways that we tried to think about that. Again, kind of being creative because of the the, a lot of the parks that are walkable for some of those flexible games are smaller. But one of, one of the strategies was to consider looking at kind of having more open hours for fields. So, you know, in times where they're not scheduled, making them open and looking at ways to do that in collaboration with schools. And then another, another one was looking at partnerships with community facilities that have, you know, things that sometimes just function as like a a civic lawn that is more of a, a traditional lawn or forecourt that's unprogrammed and thinking about, could you make that be something more usable to the community as well? So looking at creative ways to get at exactly what you're saying, Sam. Ree, anything you would add to those two? One point, which is that there are many examples of some of the ways that the city is innovating around creating more flexible infrastructure, more flexible spaces. And one that comes to my, my mind is Berry Lane Park. It's such a great example because we hosted a public meeting there on the baseball field. And so it was, it was a chance for us to use it in a way that wasn't, it wasn't necessarily planned for. But I think that the city is catching on to that and, and recognizes that there are many places around the city that don't just have to be these single-use spaces that they can have different lives. And, and as Ree said, it's, it could be around opening those spaces up throughout the day beyond what's scheduled, but then also enabling people to, to feel the agency to do that and to use those spaces for other events and other needs.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Do we have Teresa up yet? Or if not, I'd like to take a break. And we could come right back to her.
Yeah, Teresa, could you try star nine on your phone? I think you might have dialed in. Okay.
All right, let's, um, let's take a break, everybody. And we'll see if we can get Teresa online. And then if we can't, right after the break, I will entertain a motion to close this public portion. But let's take ten minutes first, everybody. It's seven forty-five. We'll come back at seven fifty-five. Okay, could we come to order again, everybody? Okay, uh, so we're still open for public on the open space element. Do we have anybody else from public that wants to comment on the open space portion of the presentation? Uh, we had Teresa in there. I don't know if we've been able to get her back on. But anybody that liked to speak on the open space portion of the presentation, please raise your hand. If you're calling in, you can press star nine to raise your hands. Okay, I'll entertain a motion then to close public for now.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to, uh, close the public portion.
Second.
Okay, what's been made and seconded to close the public portion on the open space aspect.
All right. Chair, I would just offer that if Teresa has a question, um, you know, she's welcome to email me or any of the other staff. I'm mclark@jcnj.org and we'd be happy to follow up with her.
Okay, Mallory, if you, oh, there it is. Okay. I was just going to ask you to put that in the chat. So that email address is in the chat right now. Okay, uh, Liz, do you want to move on?
Just so really quick, I just want to say thank you so much to Rhiannon and Bree for joining tonight and the rest of the Open Space Master Plan team. Thank you to the Jersey City Parks Coalition and other stakeholders throughout the city who've been involved throughout the creation of this element. And I know where it's the planning, we're really excited to begin implementing these recommendations and working across the city to achieve all these goals. So thank you again to the team and thank you all for your questions and comments.
All right. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate the work. It's great work.
Thanks, Lindsay. All right, I'm going to share the land use video. And just let me know if there's any issues.
Good evening. My name is Susan Pavadi. I'm a principal with BFJ Planning and I'm here with my colleague Noah Levine, the associate principal at BFJ. Uh, and we're really excited to present to you tonight, the Jersey City Master Plan Land Use Element. Um, this is an almost two-year process that we've undertaken with the city. And we're going to spend time tonight, um, telling you about many of its recommendations and the process itself. And we hope that the planning board will adopt the document this evening. So I'm going to get started on presentation. And, uh, basically we're, we're going to provide an overview of the land use element itself, as well as the process for the planning. Um, we're going to give you the, uh, the guiding principles that are part of the land use element, as well as a general overview of its larger recommendations. Um, and the, the element also included a process of a small area vision planning for specific neighborhoods in the city. And we're going to go take you through those. And then finally, we'll open it up for discussion and questions from the board and the public. Okay. So in terms of the process for the land use element, this was part of a larger planning process, which you heard about earlier in the evening. Um, the master plan, uh, vision document, our Jersey City, um, our element was a piece of that process and closely coordinated with the, uh, the vision team as well as the open space element team. Um, we worked under the Department of Housing, Economic Development and Commerce, um, and the Division of City Planning. And, um, our project manager on this was Liz Opfer from the city. On the consultant's side, uh, BFJ Planning was the lead firm. Uh, myself as principal in charge and Noah here tonight, we also had several other folks on our team. And we had sub consultants, uh, FHI Studio, uh, who led the small area vision planning effort, Mud Workshop focused on urban design, which you'll hear about later in the evening. Uh, and then RES Group looks specifically at issues of development, uh, in real estate. We worked closely with two, uh, steering committees who, uh, helped guide the process, um, and testing out recommendations and issues that we heard about throughout the process. We had a technical advisory committee, uh, which included a number of stakeholders with very specific technical expertise, uh, across a range of areas. And we met also, from the next slide, you'll see, um, with the, uh, city council members, uh, representing the different wards of the city, as well as the city as a whole, um, and their, their representatives of the community. Uh, for both of these committees, we met regularly during the process and they were instrumental in, in giving us feedback, uh, and the development of the plan. Now I'm going to turn it to Noah to spend a few minutes about, uh, the overall planning process.
Thanks, Susan. Uh, as you can see in the schedule, uh, on this, uh, slide, the planning process was roughly about a year and a half. Uh, we began in March twenty twenty, just before COVID nineteen. Uh, but what this, uh, schedule shows is the sequence of, uh, various, um, deliverables and public outreach activities, um, as, uh, they were completed. Uh, the first phase, um, began with our analysis of existing conditions, which we completed at the end of twenty twenty. Um, during that time, we also conducted a number of outreach activities. Uh, we started to develop draft recommendations in the winter and spring of twenty twenty-one. Uh, and that was concurrent with the development of the small area vision plans. Uh, and in the summer, we submitted, uh, draft plans, uh, to the city, uh, which were provided online and commented on. And we're here to present our final recommendations. Our plan included a number of opportunities for public engagements. Uh, in the beginning, we had a neighborhood needs survey, which really helped to outline some of the, uh, initial, um, issues and opportunities that we, uh, should look at. And it pointed us in the right direction. We also had a variety of, uh, online public workshops. Um, we shifted more to an online engagement strategy due to, uh, the impact of COVID nineteen. Uh, but in the early stages of the process, we did have an in-person public workshop. Uh, we did a number of other surveys, including merchant surveys. We did interviews with developers. We had a series of focus group meetings organized, organized around various topic areas, as well as shirets as part of the small area vision plan process. I just wanted to give you an outline of what is included in the land use element. Uh, this slide just shows the table of contents. Uh, after the introduction, we have the community profile, um, which explains a lot of the issues and trends that have occurred since the prior plan was done in two thousand. Uh, existing land use and zoning chapter, uh, lays the foundation of what is there now and what zoning, uh, exists today. Uh, the land use principles, which I'm going to go into on subsequent slides, uh, provides, uh, a framework for, um, goals and recommendations that were provided later in, in the report. Uh, the urban design framework was completed by Mud Workshop and looks at, um, areas in the city that share commonalities and looks at, um, strategies to improve those areas, um, based on various typologies. And lastly, the land use and zoning recommendations, which, which Susan will go over, uh, later in this presentation, uh, provides detail, detailed recommendations, um, both for land use zoning, as well as policy and programmatic changes. The last chapter, the small area vision plan, um, done by FHI, um, looks at, um, specific neighborhood, um, plans and, um, improvements that could be done in those areas. Uh, the summary in the land use element is, is really, um, just an executive summary. Um, the full plans can be found in the appendix, appendix A. Appendix B provides supplementary zoning information, as well as, uh, detailed information on, uh, each redevelopment plan, as well as the climate action and energy plan, which was developed by the city, uh, and hopefully will be adopted as part of this land use element. Uh, now I'm going to, uh, discuss some of the land use principles. Uh, based on our extensive analysis of existing conditions, input from the public, stakeholders and city staff, a number of key principles emerged that guide the overall land use approach. These principles detailed in chapter three provide a policy foundation for land use and zoning recommendations, as well as for policy and program changes. The foundational core for each of these principles can be found in the four lenses identified in our JC Master Plan Vision, connectivity, mobility, economic opportunity, social equity and climate resiliency. While the lenses are used as the organizing, organizing framework for the larger vision document, they also guide the overall approach and specific recommendations in this land use element. An upcoming supply, uh, slides, I will brief, briefly go through the land use elements guiding principles. The first two principles focus on the need to enhance residential neighborhoods and also ensure that the city's housing supply is balanced and meets the needs of residents. While Jersey City's skyline is marked by dense, high-rise development, most of its residential neighborhoods exist at a much lower scale. One and two unit housing typically in the R one district is the largest and most prevalent land use in the city. Many, many of these areas have been Many, many of these areas have unseen a significant amount of reinvestment, despite the rapid growth happening elsewhere in the city. Many of these areas have unique urban design challenges, such as how buildings address parking, as well as how they can retain an attractive streetscape. Policies point to recommendations that will help to stabilize and upgrade neighborhoods, such as Bergen Lafayette, Greenville and the Heights, promoting rehabilitation of substandard units and field development of diverse housing types, and inclusion of neighborhood-oriented commercial uses where appropriate, to ensure that all residents are within walking distance to goods and services. Housing affordability has become a major issue, as real estate values have been rising in the city and the region. The city should adjust policies and zoning to provide for more diversity in housing options. This could be done through policies that require affordable housing, but also by allowing for increased densities and accessory dwelling units in specific areas. The next two slides talk about the need to make Jersey City a more walkable community, filled with neighborhoods that have everything they need within a 15-minute walk. The need for all residents to have convenient access to neighborhood commercial amenities was a consistent theme that emerged from the public outreach. Residents expressed support for a wider diversity in businesses within their own neighborhoods, especially small business options. There was significant interest in providing for more food options. Providing neighborhood retail and services within walking distance of all residents will strengthen vitality and provide options for different types and scales of businesses. This element looks at ways to improve the health of commercially zoned corridors, including where commercial activities should be strengthened and occasionally where it should be limited to core areas. The element also identifies ways for businesses to reconnect with the streetscape and promote street activity. With regard to transportation, while some areas have excellent public transit access, residents in many neighborhoods still use cars to access jobs, goods and services. There remains the need for more convenient options for non-vehicular transportation throughout the city. Many commercial areas are heavily biased towards the automobile, making them less safe for pedestrians and bicyclists and unattractive for residents and visitors. Even many of the neighborhood-oriented commercial corridors could be more inviting. The zoning approach for many of the commercial corridors considered ways to make these roads more friendly. The zoning looks at areas that could support some additional densities to create walkable nodes, such as near light rail stations and neighborhood commercial centers. These three principles address the need to ensure that Jersey City's growth is economically sustainable. During focus group meetings and other public outreach events, representatives from the business and development communities expressed that the city could do more to drive local economic activity, increase employment, strengthen the tax base and protect against cyclical downturns. The city should continue to employ strategies that will track businesses through clear, predictable and transparent regulations, procedures and timelines. The city acknowledges that there is a need to retain a diversity of commercial and industrial uses. Most job growth in the past 20 years has been at the high end of the income scale. There is a need for jobs oriented to the full spectrum of income levels, so more residents can live and work within the city. The city should encourage adaptive reuse of obsolete buildings, especially industrial facilities for uses that include commercial and/or industrial activities, not just residential. The element promotes adaptive reuse opportunities and other zoning approaches to protect and support the incubation of small businesses, arts, urban manufacturing, maker space offices and other green industries. Retail environment in Jersey City and the country as a whole has shifted in recent years. The rise in internet shopping has resulted in a decline in traditional brick and mortar sales nationwide. This impact is being felt in the city's large format commercial areas, which tend to be auto-oriented with large, underutilized parking areas. Jersey City can help to ensure that vulnerable large format retail areas are in a good position to adapt by creating a flexible regulatory environment. Flexibility is also needed in the office market. COVID-19 has resulted in a dramatic shift in demand for office uses. While it's impossible to predict how the market will evolve, the city should consider allowing for some flexibility to allow office spaces to adapt. Some of the older office buildings may be appropriate for conversion to residential with affordable housing. Other potential uses include hospitality, medical offices, coworking, light manufacturing and commercial kitchens. These policies address the need to improve community facilities and public facilities throughout the city. The public realm includes streets, sidewalks and public spaces, most of which are publicly owned. Therefore, the city has more agency in generating change. The streetscape along some of the city's neighborhood-oriented commercial corridors is in need of improvements to make them more walkable and welcoming for shopping and dining. Additionally, many of the city's major oriented, auto-oriented commercial corridors need aesthetic improvements. COVID-19 has also forced many cities to rethink public spaces, including creative approaches to encourage business activity on sidewalks and streets. In addition, more can be done to identify and strengthen gateways into the city, as well as into individual neighborhoods. Jersey City's public realm also provides an opportunity to celebrate the diversity of its residents and the richness of its arts and cultural offerings. Public art and historic markers can serve a dual purpose of beautifying the streetscape and public spaces, while also educating residents and visitors alike about the city's diverse heritage. The land use element also supports policies from the open space and public facilities element. For example, the city should link existing parks and open space assets to form interconnected greenways that provide connectivity to neighborhoods, public facilities and end employment areas. This network should include public access along both the Hudson and Hackensack Rivers. The city should also look to reuse legacy infrastructure, such as the Bergen Arches, Sixth Street Embankment and Morris Canal for greenways. In the years since the 2000 master plan, commitment to sustainable planning has taken a more prominent stage. This reflects several factors, including more development pressure on a diminishing supply of land and greater awareness of the environmental impacts of human activities. Reducing flood risk remains as one of the city's most pressing needs. The land use element incorporated recommendations from prior plans, such as the Climate Action Plan, Resiliency and Adaptation Master Plans, Urban Environmental Green Infrastructure Design Plan, as well as adoption of the flood-prone overlay district. The city should also continue to further recommendations of the Climate Action Plan by facilitating sustainable development policies that minimize waste and energy use, both for private developers and at city-owned facilities. The second policy addresses facilities such as parks, schools, community centers and emergency services. Specific recommendations are provided in the open space and public facilities element. In general, there's a need to provide a balance of citywide community facilities that are accessible from every neighborhood. There's also a need to upgrade community facilities, particularly in underserved areas and those that are rapidly growing. Land use policies also seek to accommodate and capitalize on the growth of the city's colleges and universities, museums and other cultural and educational uses. Jersey City's historical development has contributed to a dense and complex urban fabric, where land use densities, access to resources and socioeconomic conditions can vary from one neighborhood to the next. In order to touch upon all areas of the city, the land use element addresses issues at the citywide, mid-level and local scales. The citywide scale looks at conditions that occur throughout the city and should be addressed through comprehensive zoning changes and capital improvements. The mid-scale recognizes that some of the issues occur in multiple areas of the city, based on different types of development patterns. The urban design framework largely created by Mud Workshop, which is in Chapter Four, identifies many of the commonalities and presents recommendations based on development type. Finally, at the local scale, this planning process included the development of three small area vision plans for specific geographic areas. These plans address community concerns and provide an opportunity to demonstrate how citywide recommendations can be implemented at the neighborhood level. In this way, these neighborhood plans serve as templates for how to implement the land use element across the city and serve as a model for the creation of neighborhood plans. And now I'm going to pass it to Susan to provide an overview of recommendations within the land use element.
Thank you, Noah. We're going to take you through the wide range of recommendations in the land use element. It is an extensive document and includes many, many recommendations. We're not going to go through every single one in detail, but we hope the planning board has been able to review the document and we know that there'll be an opportunity for questions at the end as well. So on the next slide, we'll get started with the urban design framework, which, again, as Noah mentioned, it's looking at the mid-scale environment. The urban design framework examines Jersey City's built environment and classifies it into a number of categories or development patterns, according to how people experience and navigate the city. This includes not only the buildings, but also the public realm. For example, the street right-of-way, public plazas, transportation infrastructure, waterfronts and the in-between or leftover spaces. This analysis identified 10 major types of development patterns to guide recommendations that speak to the master plan lenses, as well as the land use principles that Noah just spoke about, but that are tailored to the specific built environment for these areas. There are loosely defined areas of the city that may have comparable land use patterns and can thus be addressed in similar ways, even if they are in different neighborhoods. Of these development patterns, the five highlighted are ones that received more in-depth analysis, because they were determined to be experiencing significant land use issues that need to be addressed and because they best advance the community's near-term priorities, as well as the master plan vision. And we'll be discussing these in more detail in the upcoming slides. In looking at which development patterns to explore in more detail and what recommendations might be appropriate for them, the project team examined another number of interrelated factors. We looked at the relationship between transit and population density and also which areas of the city are particularly vulnerable to climate change. We also looked at where neighborhoods are experiencing rapid growth and what that means in terms of community facilities and amenities. And finally, we found that there are portions of Jersey City where lower-income residents often have access, less access to neighborhood goods and services, which raises concerns about equity. And on the next slide, we'll get started on those, those development patterns that are highlighted in the previous slides. And the first one is low-density residential areas, which, as Noah mentioned, really occupies a very significant area of land in Jersey City. In fact, the majority of the city is characterized by low-density residential neighborhoods like Greenville, West Side and the Heights, which generally corresponds to the R1 zoning district. The built environment here tends to be auto-oriented, as is shown in these photos, dominated by off-street parking infrastructure. We also found in our analysis that there are frequent variance requests and density violations in the R1 district, which indicates a market demand for different types of housing than the district may allow. And finally, the R1 zone is largely a one- and two-family residential district, with a lack of opportunities for neighborhood businesses within walking distance. So on the next slide, you'll see some strategies that the land use element identifies for low-density residential areas and some key issues. And the land use element spends a lot, spends a lot of time analyzing and talking about this R1 district, because it is so significant in the city and looks at ways to, to make the design of sites in the zone less focused on the car and more on the pedestrian and the streetscape. Many of the land use elements' recommendations deal with parking, limiting the amount of off-street parking and reducing curb cuts, especially on narrow lots, to improve pedestrian safety and try to reclaim more area for landscaping. There are also recommendations that speak to supporting a broader range of housing types, including small apartment buildings that are compatible with the overall density and scale of the neighborhoods. Many of these types of buildings already exist and predate the current zoning. On the next slide, looking at residential neighborhoods across the city, there are a number of recommendations in the land use element that speak to these, these areas. There are a series of recommended map changes that essentially would reflect what actually exists already on the ground, whether it's multifamily or mixed-use corridors, that doesn't actually conform to the current zoning. We also suggest implementing standard bulk requirements regardless of use in residential districts. This will help to streamline the ordinance and also recognize that a building's uses can change over time. And we know that in some neighborhoods, their buildings have detached garages or carriage houses, and these could be converted to accessory dwelling units to broaden affordable housing opportunities. Let's go, going back to the R1 district, there are a number of recommendations that really pertain specifically to the R1. One of these is considering allowing three-unit dwellings as a conditional use at a relative density comparable to the existing housing stock. Additional density could also be considered to promote rehabilitation or restoration of historic buildings. And where there are front-facing garages, we recommend looking at allowing small businesses to occupy these areas, both to increase access to neighborhood goods and services and to activate the street front. Similarly, the land use element recommends allowing small-scale restaurants at corners and along two-way streets in the R1 district. And both of these recommendations really speak to the concept of the 15-minute city that Noah discussed earlier, where more residents can walk to local businesses and be less dependent on a car. The land use element also notes that there are pockets of a historic building typology found in key areas of the R1 district that's characterized by two stories with a cellar and a raised stoop. It's a very unique building type, and the land use element recommends exploring zoning overlay approaches to preserve these areas and protect them from demolition. On the next slide, we talk specifically about parking in the R1 district. And the land use element recommends changes to bulk and parking regulations that would effectively restrict curb cuts to narrower lots that are less than 50 feet wide. We believe this could be effective in discouraging many curb cuts, as well as building demolitions. And the reduction in curb cuts should also allow for better enforcement of existing prohibitions on parking in the front yard. It's something that currently is not allowed, but it's something that we see throughout the R1 neighborhoods. The land use element also suggests taking a more nuanced approach to parking requirements in the R1 zone that reflects the bedroom mix, rather than the total number of units. So the next development pattern that we'll discuss is regional corridors. And these are, these types of roads, which are shown in red on the map, are characterized by high-speed traffic and a limited focus on bikes and pedestrians. The land uses here tend to be low-rise and auto-oriented. They're reinforced by bulk standards that promote things like drive-through, large parking lots and large front yard setbacks. On the next slide, we get into some of the recommendations that the urban design framework focuses on. The framework looks at opportunities for targeted density increases that are focused on key intersections, while maintaining the scale of adjacent neighborhoods. Additional density could also be considered to achieve community amenities and affordable housing, while changes to bulk standards could create a more pedestrian-friendly environment that can significantly change the character of these corridors over time. On the next slide, we talk about another type of commercial area, what we call gateway corridors. And the land use element recommends that the city can consider creating a new zoning district for several of these corridors that are entry points into the city and are heavily used by commuters and residents alike. These corridors are characterized by auto-related uses like repair shops and car washes, which are definitely necessary uses for the community. But we do think that there are opportunities to improve the design of these areas, to be more pedestrian-friendly and to limit impacts on nearby neighborhoods. You can see on the map several of these, these areas highlighted. They include Communipaw Avenue, portions of Communipaw Avenue, as well as portions of Route 139 and the southern end of Kennedy Boulevard. Moving on to waterfront areas, looking at the waterfront planning district in particular, this is found on Route 440, which is a corridor that is changing significantly with the upcoming bayfront development, as well as development around New Jersey City University. And there are long-term plans to transition Route 440 into a boulevard with more pedestrian amenities. We found in the land use element process that the WPD district really is not consistent with that future vision. And so major changes are needed to that district to better align with, with that long-term plan and to create access, public access to the Hackensack River waterfront. We also suggest pulling in the highway commercial area, which is shown on the map, just south of Communipaw Avenue, merging that into the WP district for a more cohesive approach. On the next slide, we look at Tonley Avenue, which is currently zoned for highway commercial. And this zoning district provides for large-format retail uses with significant yards to allow for surface parking and a maximum height of six stories. But that's not actually what exists on Tonley Avenue. And so the land use element suggests that this area be rezoned to commercial automotive, which is a better fit, both in terms of bulk and the allowable uses. There are some changes that may be needed to the CA zone to accommodate the existing hotels on the Tonley Avenue corridor. On the next slide, we look at neighborhood centers, which is another development pattern that the urban design framework looks at. And these are neighborhoods that are typically fairly well-defined in the city and they often contain a wide mix of local businesses. Some of these neighborhood centers are also supported by special improvement districts. But what we heard from the local business community and throughout the public engagement process is that neighborhood centers tend to lack a critical mass that can really support a vibrant neighborhood business, community. And many of these areas do remain focused on the automobile with limited pedestrian access from nearby neighborhoods that could really be strengthened. So on the next slide, we look at some of the key strategies for, for the neighborhood centers. And they really center on looking at bulk strategies and new zoning that supports density at a range of scales that are appropriate to the surrounding area, but that start to create that critical mass to support more local businesses. They also look at using bulk standards to incentivize improvements on the public realm. So on this slide, you see that there, there are three scales that the land use element identifies for neighborhood centers that would be reinforced through new zoning. On the small end of the scale, there's, there's a scale that looks at Um, on the small end of the scale, there's, there's, uh, a scale that looks at five stories, uh, a mixed-use context. Um, and you see that identified for several areas, uh, throughout the city. Uh, in the medium scale for neighborhood centers, that would be six to eight stories, either in a mixed-use or all-commercial building context. Um, and these are found or located at West Side Avenue, uh, portions of West Side Avenue, as well as portions of Newark Avenue and the Five Corners area, uh, also on Newark Avenue. Um, at the larger end, the large-scale neighborhood center, this would be eight to twelve stories, um, and a variety of formats. And this is identified for two specific areas of the city, McEnley Square and the periphery of the Journal Square area. Okay, the next development pattern is, uh, transit nodes, uh, really focused on the light rail stations that are outside the downtown core, typically in the southern part of the city, um, that lack the population density and, and strong access to the transit node that would support higher ra, ridership for these stations. Um, these stations are clearly ma, major assets for their neighborhoods, but they need to be better connected into the neighborhood, um, including with greater amenities so that they are more usable, um, by the community. So in terms of recommendations for transit nodes, um, there are a range of strategies to strengthen these train, these station areas, uh, including supporting targeted density increases, allowing more, providing more, uh, amenities around the station and, and the areas themselves, and improving access to other modes of transportation such as, uh, the, the pedestrian network, the sidewalk network, uh, bike infrastructure and micro-mobility like, like the VIA system. Uh, on the next slide, we talk about regulations, the, the, uh, the future zoning of these transit nodes. It's a very similar approach to that taken by the neighborhood centers. Um, there are three scales of development shown that would be supported by changes in zoning. Um, at the small end, that, that very similar scale to the neighborhood centers, um, it's a five-story mixed-use context. And you see that recommended for Congress Street and Garfield Avenue. Um, um, the mid-scale, the medium density, uh, it would be six to eight stories. Um, and that's really recommended around the Martin Luther King Avenue Station as well as West Side Avenue. And then in the southern portion of the city, the two stations at Danforth Avenue and Richard Street, this would be, uh, a more limited density, uh, comparable to the R2D or R5 zoning district, um, which already exists in the city. Um, and it's important to note that, uh, for these transit nodes, none of these areas, uh, were determined to be appropriate for the larger-scale development that you saw in some of the neighborhood centers. So transitioning to large-format retail, which you've heard a bit about earlier, um, there are several areas of Jersey City that are characterized by large-scale malls, either indoor or outdoor malls, um, as well as, uh, large-scale, single-tenant, big-box stores. And these places are clearly important, uh, in providing goods and services as well as jobs for Jersey City residents and nearby communities. But with major shifts in the retail environment driven by the explosion of online retail and accelerated by the COVID pandemic, um, it can be expected that owners of these properties may want to explore new development options. So this creates an opportunity to correct some of the urban design issues that these, what, areas present, such as cutting off waterfront areas, breaking up the street grid, and lacking in pedestrian and bike infrastructure. So the urban design framework and the Land Use Element, uh, overall, both re, have a range of recommendations, uh, for large-format retail. Um, the, the framework re, recommends strategies in the event of future development of these areas that should be used. Um, on the next slide, you'll see that this includes, uh, re-establishing the street grid, reorienting development to the pedestrian and the street, broadening the range of allowable uses, and reducing impervious coverage. And it's important to note that these areas are private property, and the city cannot compel new development to occur. However, the Land Use Element recommends working collaboratively with the property owners on their future plans to ensure that if and when changes do happen, they leverage the opportunity to improve the built environment as illustrated in the Land Use Element. Moving on to the next slide, looking, um, looking broadly at, uh, commercial and industrial areas throughout the city, the Land Use Element talks about adding more flexibility to accommodate many new uses that, uh, the market may shift and demand for. Um, this includes some of the bus, the uses that you see on the screen, commercial agriculture, business incubators, small-scale manufacturing, uh, medical labs, and, uh, commercial kitchens, which you heard about earlier. Um, also allowing more use, more, more than one use in a single space, and overall supporting, uh, green and job-creating industrial uses that can, can really speak to the market, uh, that is in place today. Looking at institutional and open space areas, um, the Land Use Element recommends rezoning, uh, some of the, some key assets in the city to the, the parks and open space zone. This includes the Bergen Arches and the Sixth Street Embankment. Um, the element also recommends, uh, expanding the potential uses in the PO district, um, to allow for more community amenities such as, uh, food options. Um, the Land Use Element also talks about, uh, institutional districts, uh, and recommends working with higher-learning institutions on their long-term planning to ensure that they can continue to grow while knitting their facilities, uh, better into the neighborhoods. And it's recommended, um, that the city explore an overlay zoning approach, particularly for St. Peter's, that could provide the school with more flexibility while respecting the local context. The next section of, of the Land Use Element, um, talks about historic districts and, and areas. And there are three, uh, areas of the city where there are recommended new local zoning, uh, sorry, new local historic districts. Um, the first is Bergen Hill, just north of the Junction neighborhood, uh, Communipaw Lafayette, which is a little bit west of, um, uh, of Liberty State Park, as well as an area along Sherman Place in the Heights, which would be designated, uh, the Hudson City, uh, Historic District. Uh, in addition, the Land Use Element recommends, uh, cleaning up some of the existing boundaries of historic districts as well as the underlying zoning, um, ensuring compatible infill development and updating the historic preservation element. And on the next slide, you'll see that there are a number of other recommendations that the Land Use Element explores. Um, the first is dealing with parking and curbside management. The city completed a parking plan in twenty twenty, and it includes many recommendations that can be implemented and that the Land Use Element supports. Uh, this includes rationalizing parking ratios across zoning districts and redevelopment areas, and improving the efficiency of off-street parking overall. Um, the Land Use Element also speaks to managing, uh, managing curb cuts and curbside management. Uh, this is an issue that really came, came into focus during the pandemic, when we saw great demand for drop-off and pickup. Um, and the Land Use Element recommends, uh, approaching this through a balance of pedestrian safety and the availability of on-street parking while acknowledging the needs for drop-off and voting areas. Moving on to the next slide, um, there have been a number of measures taken by the city to, to enhance sustainability and resiliency to climate change, building off of, uh, many, many prior efforts, including the Climate and Energy Action Plan. And the city has been quite active in implementing many of these recommendations, such as, uh, allowing for more electric vehicle charging stations, as you see on the map on the, on the, on the right, which shows, uh, city-owned EV charging stations. Um, other recommendations in the Land Use Element also include support for inclusionary housing and other affordability measures throughout the city. This was something that came out strongly in the, in the community engagement as part of this process, as well as improving signage, uh, um, design of signage and gateways, and implementing cannabis business reg, regulations which were recently adopted by the city. And finally, uh, the, the Land Use Element does include a number of sort of cleanup, uh, recommendations. There are opportunities to clarify and streamline both the zoning map and the text so that it's more user-friendly and up-to-date. And you'll see that there are very detailed maps in the Land Use Element that, that identify many of these changes. The final piece of, of the Land Use Element, um, speaks to, uh, redevelopment planning, which is a very significant aspect of Jersey City's land use and development. And it's been a major tool, uh, in the city's development for decades. It's propelled major revitalization initiatives that have transformed large areas of the city. However, with almost one hundred individual redevelopment plan areas that cover roughly half of the land area of Jersey City, we find that a heavy reliance on redevelopment has tended to create a hodgepodge of land use. Um, and some of the issues that that creates, uh, include, uh, jarring transitions, uh, to adjoining neighborhoods, and an overall lack of predictability on the scale of development and its impacts on infrastructure. So looking forward, the Land Use Element suggests that the city takes a more intentional approach to redevelopment that focuses on how redevelopment designation can be used to achieve benefits the community needs, such as open space and transit improvements. The plan also identifies, um, which we, we, which redevelopment plan areas are ripe for transition to traditional or straight zoning, which areas should be revisited or changed, and which should remain in place as redevelopment proceeds. And you see that in the map on the right. The, the areas in gray are basically recommended to remain in place. Uh, areas in green may be ripe for transitioning to traditional zoning, and then there are other areas identified, uh, for changes. Additional recommendations on the next slide regarding redevelopment include, uh, two new potential redevelopment plan areas. Um, these are the Hudson County Office Complex, uh, located on Montgomery Street, and also the Sixth Street Embankment. Um, and then there are also recommendations for some updates, uh, to specific redevelopment plan areas, including two of which, which came directly out of, um, the Small Area Vision Planning, which we'll speak about in a minute. And then the maps that you see on this page, which I'm not going to go through, uh, one by one, but they summarize many of the recommendations on, on map changes that address recommendations we've been speaking about, including removing remnant zoning, creating new zones to strengthen neighborhood centers and transit nodes, and changing residential zoning to reflect the existing mixed-use on the ground. And on the next slide, um, we, we'll just discuss briefly. Um, there is an implementation matrix in the Land Use Element that summarizes all the recommendations of the plan in one place, which we hope makes it easy for the city to track over time, um, and really, uh, forms a to-do list for the city to help, uh, help with their implementation efforts. Okay, so now I'm going to transition to the Small Area Vision Plans, which, uh, which again were prepared by FHI Studio, um, and involved, uh, a sort of separate process, uh, as, which was part of the Land Use Element, but, uh, but also a separate process on its own. Uh, and these are community-driven plans for three specific areas of the city. Uh, these areas were selected because they exhibit issues that were identified as priorities, uh, in the citywide neighborhood needs study. Uh, they're areas that have not typically received much planning attention, and they also show diversity in terms of, uh, demographics, uh, and geography. Um, as Noah mentioned earlier, the Small Area Vision Plans, uh, present an opportunity to test city-wide recommendations at the local scale, but they also, uh, identify detailed strategies that respond to concerns raised by the individual communities and advance their priorities. And on the next slide, you'll see, uh, where these areas are. There are, again, three areas, West Side Avenue, uh, the Junction and Lower Heights. And for each area, a plan was developed that includes a range of recommendations, uh, including regulations, uh, which could be zoning or design guidelines, uh, public or capital improvements, or programs and policies. And because of the COVID pandemic, um, all of the engagement for the Small Area Vision Plans, uh, were, was done virtually, uh, but it included a robust process for each area to reach interested residents and stakeholders and involve them closely in the planning process. And moving to the next slide, um, we'll discuss a little bit more in detail on the, on the engagement. Um, it occurred on multiple levels. First, there was an on-demand, on-demand workshop, which gave participants the opportunity to, uh, to engage on, at their own time and, and inconvenience and ongoing online activities. For each small area, we asked people to identify their priority areas of concern, their big ideas, what they want to see either change or be preserved, and what types of building scale they think, uh, is appropriate for their neighborhood. In addition, uh, we also hosted two online workshops for each small area. The first workshop identified the community's goals, and the second tested or confirmed those goals and also laid out recommendations, uh, to implement those goals. And the outcome of all of this, uh, public engagement was a tailored plan for each, each area that lays out, uh, its specific goals and recommendations. Um, each, uh, each planning area is different, uh, and it responds to what we heard from those individual communities. But as you'll see in the slides I'm getting ready to cover, um, there were a lot of commonalities across each small area. So getting started with the Junction, um, the major theme here is about mobility, um, really rationalizing the road network in this, this neighborhood to improve conditions for pedestrians and cyclists as well as drivers. Um, as I mentioned earlier, it also includes recommendations about revising one of the redevelopment plan areas, um, in this neighborhood, the Mars Canal Redevelopment Plan, and also designating Bergen Hill as a local historic district. Looking at the goals for the Junction, I'm not going to read these individually, but, um, the first one is revitalization, which really speaks to promoting development that addresses vacant and underutilized areas. Uh, we heard a lot about essential services, um, which are, are much-needed local services, uh, goo, goods and services that, um, that the community has identified as, as a key need. Um, again, multimodal mobility was a major theme, um, and the need to improve safety and functionality in the Junction. And then the local environment is something we heard a lot about, issues of cleanliness and attractiveness of the public realm. So there are specific recommendations, uh, for each of these areas. For the West Side Avenue, um, some of the key themes that we heard here were looking at streetscape and building facade improvements along the West Side Avenue corridor itself, um, as well as in, increasing multi-mobility options throughout the neighborhood, um, and activating the light rail station area through the creation of a town square park with new mixed-use development. Moving to the goals for West Side Avenue, again, you'll see some overlap here, but we've heard many of the same themes across neighborhoods. Um, here, I think the priority goal was essential services, um, the, the need to increase avail, availability of neighborhood goods and services, especially grocery stores, um, as well as provide a multi-generational community center. That's something that we heard, um, really desired by the community. Um, for revitalization, there's a need to support new infill development, but also to maintain the scale of the interior blocks and promote adaptive reuse and rehab over demolition. Again, we heard issues with the local environment on cleanliness and aesthetics of the public realm, and also a desire for new or improved open spaces. And on multimodal mobility, um, again, we heard a desire for more options and expanded access as well as needs for maintenance and improved lighting in the neighborhood. So the final, uh, small area plan that, that the Land Use Element looks at is the Lower Heights area. Um, and here, uh, one of the key themes we heard was, uh, the need to green the neighborhood and expand open space, public open space. We heard a lot about the R1 zoning district, which really dovetailed with what we were looking at, um, on a citywide level, um, and the need to, to amend the R1 zoning, uh, was, was an issue of great concern to this neighborhood. Um, another theme is helping homeowners maintain and upgrade their buildings and improving Route one thirty-nine, as well as major north-south corridors like Baldwin Summit and Palisade Avenues. So in terms of the goals for Lower Heights, um, many of them, again, are similar to some of the other neighborhoods, but slightly different as well. Um, the key priority here was multimodal mobility and the need to improve pedestrian and bike access, both within the Lower Heights and also connecting to surrounding areas. And there was identified a need to leverage assets like the Bergen Arches and the Calisades to create new links, uh, to transportation to other areas. On the local environment, there were concerns raised again about, um, cleanliness and attractiveness of the public realm, and also the need to bury utility lines, uh, and create new open space. And this is a neighborhood that was very concerned about development pressures, uh, and the need to maintain its existing scale. Um, so the, the Small Area Vision Plan speaks a great deal to balancing investment, uh, with the preservation of the existing context and also affordable housing. With that, I'm going to turn it over to city staff to facilitate questions and comments from the board as well as members of the public. Thank you very much for your time tonight.
Okay, thank you, Susan and Noah, for that great presentation. Uh, I'll just point out to, um, just everyone how, how much information they covered in there and, and how much further, um, in length, the, the land use documents are. So the land use document itself is two hundred pages, and then there's appendices on top of that inclusive of supplementary information, and then the Small Area Vision Plan. So we're, you know, it might have seemed like a long presentation, but forty-five minutes to cover three hundred pages of, um, information i, is great and was very comprehensive and, um, covered a lot of information. Um, and then also, I would just like to say that, um, I, I know the word recommendation was said a lot in the presentation, and I just want to emphasize that these are recommendations and that this is the beginning of a process and that any modifications to zoning will have further community engagement, um, and, and further commu, public input. Um, so I just wanted to, to reiterate that before we open up for, for questions.
All right, thanks, Liz. Um,
Thanks.
You actually just answered one of my questions. Um, I don't have a lot of questions on this document. Uh, it's unbelievably thorough. Um, three hundred pages worth of unbelievably thorough, um, documentation. But, uh, the, the big question I have is, is transitioning forward from this plan. So what's the timeframe on how this is going to affect current redevelopment plans? Are they going to have to be modified? Or can we just start utilizing the master plan as a guidance in our approvals to redevelopment plan applications? That's pretty much it.
And before you guys, um, speak to that, I apologize. I just need to swear you both in, Susan and Noah. If you could raise your right hand, do you guys swear? Any testimony you give tonight will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
And then Susan and Noah, could you just state and spell your name for me, please?
Sure, my name is Susan, S-U-S-A-N, Favate, that's F-A-V-A-T-E.
And Noah Levine, N-O-A-H, L-E-V-I-N-E.
Thank you.
Susan and Noah, good evening. It's good to see you guys.
Great, thank you. And, uh, we, we tried really hard to edit it down and down and down. It's amazing.
You did, you did.
We, we had to fit in, but, uh, I was really hoping to clock it at under two hundred. Uh, I, I think, uh, maybe- I I think maybe I'll start and then and Liz, if perhaps you and other staff might have other specifics on timeline of implementation. But I just wanted to start by reiterating that, you know, all of this is just recommendations and and you can't flip a switch with the master plan and change the zoning. The zoning, you know, can only be done by the city council. Because it's it's a regulation, so that will that will undergo its own process, which will include additional public engagement for the neighborhoods that are are affected by that potential rezoning. In terms of how it might affect your redevelopment plan, you know, new plans, revisions to plans. I might defer to your legal counsel, but I think you you could start using at least the policy. The policy thinking and the goals when when you're considering issues of redevelopment. But but it doesn't change a particular redevelopment area. That would have to be done as a separate process.
Of course, yeah, that's that's not where I'm going with it. So, you know, depending on the hour tonight, we do have applications after you. Let's say we approve the plan tonight. Can we start using this new current master plan? As, you know, a guideline to grant a a variance. You know, does this comply? Does the the application we might hear later comply with this current master plan tonight? Versus a few hours ago.
Um, I think any application that was already in in the process and has been noticed and and, you know, for example, what you've got on your agenda tonight. I I don't believe and legal correct me if I'm wrong, but I don't believe that the new master plan, if you were to adopt it tonight, would apply to that application. But I think anything that is any application that is filed after the plan is adopted would be subject to to the land use settlement.
Okay.
Yeah, so chairman, we deal with this with the time of application rule. A lot of the time and anything that we would hear tonight, obviously, you can't say to council. Oh, by the way, we just adopted this master plan right before you got on the screen. So, anything that has already been filed is going to continue. Under that time of application rule, but going forward, obviously. The new plan has to be addressed by.
Okay, yeah, I mean, considering it tonight would be a little extreme, but you know, your future, I. I want to implement this as soon as possible. There's some great things in there. Okay, that's it for me. Anybody else? Any questions on the land use portion commissioners?
Sure, I have a question. This is Commissioner Gangit. One of the recommendations you mentioned is permit conversion of existing garages to small businesses. And that would be our one zone residential to mixed use. Is this only on the main corridor or it could it could be on residential streets?
Yeah, that that's an idea that it's an example of the the process is not complete on that. And I think as part of a potential rezoning, there'd be some details that would have to be worked out in terms of where exactly. Those are appropriate. I'm not sure that they would be appropriate on every street in the R one. And you'd also have to look at available parking and and impact on the neighborhood, but certainly they might make sense on on the wider streets. Particularly two-way traffic streets where the the lady Solomon already recommends considering things like corner stores and small restaurants.
Okay. You will also mention about medical offices, labs. I didn't hear anything about hospitals. Would that be part of the same zoning?
Well, the hospitals typically, if they're not in a redevelopment area, which I believe Jersey City Medical Center is largely in a redevelopment area. But I know Christ Hospital is in its own of itself, the hospital zone. I believe that there there are some recommendations for some tweaks to that zone that came out of the lower heights, small area vision plan. But generally, there weren't other significant recommendations that dealt with the hospital zones. This is essentially maintaining them for the large part.
Thank you. Great presentation.
Well, thank you.
Okay, anybody else?
And one was with Commissioner Candace. First of all. Great presentation. Listen to it earlier today. Listen to it again, like. So many pages summed it up some. But the. When you mentioned that I'm concerned about this garages. Being converted as and it's a great idea. Mental spaces for affordable housing type of things, you know. I have a concern, like, and like we said, this will be, I have to go to zoning later on. But structurally, some of our garages, I would not want people to. Just convert their garages into houses. Structurally. Type of thing. I was kind of concerned when that was brought up. Kind of misleading right now. I have a two two car detached garage. I'm thinking to myself, how would you do that? You know. And. The other thing, the. Malls, comment of malls and stuff, and I I appreciate what you said. And we have to remind ourselves, there's a lot of jobs there. To me, there there were replacement of the factories that were on Sixth Street. And by the waterfront there when I was growing up in that neighborhood. They give people jobs and stuff, but what we also have to keep in mind is. And in there is the safe haven. For our youth and people to go to and our senior citizens to spend a day in these malls. And have. Somewhere to be at and gather, you know, like. Like we always see early in the morning when I work in a mall, there's the mall walkers. Early in the morning. I would like that to be certain. In that recommendation, like you said, but but in there was the nice jobs and stuff. Safe haven it gives to our teenage community and our elderly community.
Right, yeah, those are. Great, great points. I'll take the first one on the detached garages and affordable units or accessory dwelling units and. In the details, when it comes down to the actual zoning, you know, we we certainly don't want to encourage substandard units. It it needs to make sense. It needs to be in locations where the unit is is a good unit to be in. And and not every situation is is going to be that way. So when it comes to the actually writing the zoning, I know staff is going to have a job ahead of them. If they proceed with that recommendation, because there's going to be a lot of details to work through. It's just the the basic concept is in the land use element. And then on the malls, yeah, I think you made a lot of great points. It's really about striking a balance. They're they're really important from a regional perspective as well as for the community. And there is no, again, there's no switch that's being flipped that is going to make them go away. I don't think anybody wants that. I think it's just a recognition that these commercial environments are changing so, so rapidly. With COVID, new new uses came out, all this food delivery, you know, just wasn't even really on landscape. And we don't really know how how the commercial landscape is going to continue to change. And so if you have to accept that there may be some changes. The land you sell them and just really wants to 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 kind of telegraph, well, if if there is a change, here is the direction. The city would like it to go and we'd like it to be more connected to the pedestrian realm. We'd like it to connect to the the surrounding neighborhood. Maybe not cut off the waterfront. Maybe there's an opportunity to extend a street if the building is being demolished by the owner. You know, small stuff that that over time could make a difference, but is not going to just wholesale change the, you know, the area or or eliminate a particular use. So it's really about striking that balance of flexibility and long-term thinking.
Yeah.
Great job.
Thank you, Eddie. Yeah, if I could expand on that for one sec. You know, we're certainly not in the business of knocking town any malls tonight. One, one big takeaway that I heard in the presentation, it just jumped out at me tonight. I didn't even realize that the wording was in there. Was how. You know, the future of large format retail. Whether it changes, whether it doesn't. There is a national trend. Hopefully it doesn't happen here. Hopefully the Port Mall and and the Hudson Mall are here till the end of time and they never have to change. This plan gives the flexibility. If they need to change, it it allows them the flexibility. It allows us to have the conversation with them. And determine what the best use is at that time. But, you know, over and over and over again, in this plan, what I'm hearing is flexibility. And that is the key to this whole plan. I feel like, you know, in my time and on this board, I'm here for over eight years now. And. You know, we've seen some some major changes. The city's gone through major changes. And those changes seem to be centered in these redevelopment plans. And it lacks a lot of connectivity sometimes. I think that is the big takeaway from the land use element in this plan, and that's what I'm impressed most with about this plan. Is the flexibility that this plan gives the city and gives the stakeholders, the property owners, the residents. Everyone involved has flexibility in this plan. And it is, you know, it's just a wishlist for us. But again, it's about the conversation and what is possible out of this plan and. You know, I didn't mean to go off on that tangent there. But it it speaks to the future of retail. It speaks to the future of car culture. It speaks to the future of biking and and pedestrian access. And greenways. I am so impressed with this plan as far as the 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 green aspect and the flexibility. And that's it. I'm going to stop. I'm going to let somebody else speak right now because I'm I'm going way off. It's still the COVID kicking in. I don't know. I don't know, guys. All right, anybody else? Any questions, comments, anything?
Chairman, I just want to add that. One of the things that the plan does is it helps to focus the next step in the process. Which is moving forward with ordinances to implement some of those items. So, for example, we're talking about this concept of. Identifying these detached garages and how can we do something with that? Well, that will focus that issue into what does the governing body want to see happen? What is the recommendation? And then how do we craft the legislation, which is the ordinance? Which is, we all know, comes back in front of this body for consideration. And that's a big portion of what the plan does and a roadmap for for everybody to say, okay. Let's start focusing on these things because you've got hundreds of pages to digest. How do you stay on track? How do you stay focused?
Agreed, agreed. All right, anybody else? Any questions, comments?
Commissioner Horton, I just have one quick question. Respected changes to the R one zone. I know a lot of it was. In response to the low density and the, you know, great off-street amount of off-street parking we have and things like that. It seems like some of the changes were trying to change for the future to encourage, you know. Look at transportation, walking the fifteen minute walk, etc. Now, right now in the city, there's, I feel like about a term of crisis in some neighborhoods as far as parking goes and things of that nature. So if I'm a resident here tonight that already has an issue with parking or things like that, you know, what does the research show or, you know, what is the. Science behind the changes we're making that would convince them that, you know, this is going to benefit them for the future. Or accommodate their current situation and lack of parking and how it's going to push them in the right direction.
Right, and we we even spent hours and hours talking about the R one and and usually focused on parking. I, you know, I would say that one of one of the biggest challenges in many of the streets in the R one districts. Is that they're so chopped up with curb cuts that there's actually almost no on-street parking available. And so when you look at the the parking issues on a neighborhood basis, you know, or a street or a block. That that is one of the really big problems where you've had curb cuts that have sort of proliferated. Some of them pre-exist the current regulations. But then actually, when you look at the current regulations, they're almost encouraging new driveways. And they're encouraging the the type of building that we that we see. Sometimes it's called the bayon box, but it's it's generally the garage is right out in front. And, you know, it's you've got you've got a very sort of suburban type of scale. And that's fine. A lot of people want that. That's that's obviously type that sells. But if that's if that is all that your zoning regulations is pushing. And then you could have a simultaneous problem of of just having parking available on the street. And you're almost forcing people to to have a car and park it in the driveway, then that's not really a situation that that is probably ideal. It's it's one thing if the zoning allows that to happen where the demand is is for it, but if it's really forcing a driveway. Then that's that's kind of a policy that is that's not really where the city wants to go in terms of being green and and promoting bike and pedestrian. Transportation. So, you know, it's a tough balance because obviously those neighborhoods have a lot of cars and people need their cars to get to jobs. So you want to, you you're not going to, again, flip a switch and take everybody's car away. We couldn't do that even if we wanted to and we don't want to. It's just trying to to balance. The, again, the proliferation of those driveways that have really actually reduced parking in in those neighborhoods.
Chairman, if I could just add to that, that that's not and shouldn't be a surprise to anybody on this board. Every every meeting, we have a subdivision and one of the conditions that this body always puts in place is the shared curb cut. It's a it's a major issue. I know that Commissioner Torres is always concerned about. The tandem parking in in these garages and this the shared curb cut. It's it's not unknown to us, so I'm not surprised to see it in the report. I'd be surprised if it wasn't in the report because we hear it at least twice a meeting, every meeting, every two weeks.
Yeah, and 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 just a related thing, and these are all very interrelated issues. You know, when you think about the concept of the fifteen minute city, the the idea that someone could actually walk to their corner grocery store and that they don't have to get in a car and drive across the city. You know, again, some people want to have cars and that's fine, but if they feel that they have to have a car because they have to access goods and services on a day-to-day basis. And we give them options where they might not have to. Maybe they they choose not to have that car. Maybe they choose to to avoid that significant expense every year of of owning and maintaining a car. So again, just trying to give people options that that really strikes that balance.
And. Thank you, Peter. And you you speak about the. You know, the zoning almost encouraging that bayon box at this point. It it's, to me, it's it's always felt like a class warfare where. You know, if you're the one that can afford to build the house, you're the one that's always going to have that parking spot there. And we need that that spot to be public and turnover for the entire neighborhood over and over and over. I forget what the numbers are on, I I want to say it's four or five times a day that parking spot turns over.
Yes.
That's, you know, that's major. That's major right there. You know, we try and cut down on the number of curb cuts in the city. Don't let me go on anymore. Okay, thank you, guys. We appreciate appreciate you coming down. We're going to open up for public real quick. Liz, do you have anything before I do that?
Yeah, I'll just quickly chime in. I'm seeing some of the raised hands. I know we're participants in some of the small area vision plan meetings. So I just wanted to. Let everybody know that, you know, a part of our goal is to implement and make moves on on at least. Some of the recommendations of the small area vision plans in the near future. So we are hoping to. Set up. Figure out what to prioritize in terms of what the recommendations came out of those plans and and also speak with those communities again. So there would be an opportunity to. To continue being involved and being a part of the process within your small, the small area vision plan, which is presumably an area that's important to you, whether you live or work there.
And then just just to echo that, I would just iterate that a lot of the intention behind the small area exercise. Is that this kind of serves as a model of how planning will work moving forward. So that, you know, if your area wasn't chosen in this round, that doesn't mean that we're not going to do this effort in your neighborhood. There will be a lot of opportunities in the future. As the larger land use recommendations roll out to to engage on a more localized level. So we're hoping to repeat this exercise on a regular basis moving forward.
Sure.
Thank you.
All right, before we get to the general public, we do have a dissenting attorney that put her. Appearance on record earlier. If we could promote her first, I believe. It's Gonchar. I I forgot if I'm saying your name right. I apologize if I'm not.
Yes, excuse me, Merrill Gonchar. The firm is Sales Commiss in Gross and we are the attorneys for the owners of the Newport Center Mall. We have with us also this evening a representative of the mall as well as our licensed professional planner. Steve Shea is the representative, S-H-E-A, and Paul Phillips is our planner who we'd be happy to qualify. He'll certainly put his credentials on the record. What we'd like to do is I have a brief introduction. Mr. Shea will provide some information. With regard to the, the mall. And the anticipated impacts of these recommendations, and I put them in quotes. Recommendations and Mr. Phillips will provide the planning testimony and then we would like to circle back because we have some exhibits that show what we think are. Modifications to only four pages of this 300-page document. Which we think will soften some of the negative impacts, particularly economic impacts that we believe will flow from these recommendations. If they are adopted as drafted. I will say that we take it as an article of faith that. That the negative, negative impacts that we've already felt just by some of the publicity with regard to this. Were not intended. That's been, you know, expressed repeatedly tonight. But. We do believe that, well, let me just say this. We're going to focus on those four pages are in, are section five of chapter four, which is the large. Format retail. And we want to take this opportunity as we have previously by the submission of letters to staff, by meeting with staff. We didn't have the opportunity to meet with the consultants and. We, I did think it was interesting. Somebody indicated this evening that they reached out to developers specifically to speak to them. I'm not aware that anybody reached out to my client, even though we are the owner of one of the largest employers and property owners in the city. Which is, we think unfortunate because I think there's a great deal of information that. Simon Property certainly has is one of the largest mall owners in the country. That would have been helpful. And may have. I'll say corrected some of the assumptions that we don't agree with and upon which we think some of these. Planning determinations have been base. We appreciate the amount of work that's gone into this. As I indicated, we did convey our comments. We did have a meeting this past summer and convey many of these concerns. And we have submitted correspondence to confirm and reaffirm those concerns. We appreciate how significant this document, a document, a master plan is. And it's because we know how significant it is that we are so concerned with its immediate impact. And Mr. Chairman, you acknowledged this evening that you're going to start using it this evening if it's, or maybe not this evening, but at the next meeting if it's appropriate. And we are aware of its immediate impact. And. We understand that zoning won't change. We're aware of that, that it will be implemented only through zoning. But as you, as you've acknowledged, first of all, it is the foundation of that zoning. And that the zoning is required to be consistent with it absent, you know, super majority and explaining on the record why it's not. And it will also become an issue, and this is a grave concern to us. On any application, any variance that's sought, we will have to deal with the language in that. Master plan, even if it wasn't intended exactly as it's being applied, raised by an objector. And we think that. That is why we want to take this opportunity to see if we can make sure that it doesn't become more difficult, not less difficult. In order for us to continue to have this mall evolve and be updated and modified and. And be able to do, do the things that the city has indicated it wants us to be able to do. If we are forced to deal with some of the recommendations that we find most damaging in that section. Then we believe that the owners and tenants will be impeded in their ability to make the very changes to enhance the mall for the benefit of the citizens of Jersey City. And the thousands who are employed there or who go to the mall or who eat there or who shop there or go there for their entertainment. We would also say that we heard language tonight. So some of this is not what was in my, my prepared statements because we did listen to what your consultant said. They spoke about collaborating, collaborating. When the developer wants to redevelop. However, the language that we find most troubling does not limit itself to when there is a massive overhaul or redevelopment. By its language, it becomes operative. Immediately. So that is a concern. We do also want to say that there's much that we agree with. We laud the recognition for the need for flexibility. In order to allow the existing assets to adapt to commercial trends. However, we are very troubled by the repeated statements and. In the writing initially and now on the record. I feel inclined to say that the reports of my death are greatly exaggerated, except what you're speaking about is the impact on retail. And there seems to be this implication that bricks and mortar are going away and we are here to say that it isn't. And to the extent that these recommendations are primed upon that, we believe that that is an erroneous basis to be making these recommendations. We do agree that the retail sector is expanding to include what's identified in this document as experiential retail uses. With, I think the term is immersive and shareable experiences. We agree with that. However, we don't necessarily agree that those types of changes will also lead to a reduction in, for example, parking demand. That would free up parking for public uses, for example. We also think that we appreciate rather the recognition that Newport, Newport Center is. Unique. It has easy access to public and private transportation that serves the majority of the city's population. So we think those are all good things. We are particularly concerned though with three categories of comments and requirements that are set forth. One is repeated reference to, references to the extension of streets. And the language appears to state that they're recommending that these streets go through the mall. Through the parking deck and through the retail portions of the mall without making it clear. What is really intended by this language and we will identify the specifics to that. But there are specific statements of extending public streets through the mall. That's one of them. Another is talking about outward facing and inward facing. And while anybody who's familiar with the mall knows that where the opportunity permit presents itself, where appropriate. There has been efforts and they've been successful putting restaurants that open directly to the street rather than into the mall. However, as we'll point out later with specific language, the language that's used here talks about any, all. And does not take into account that it may not be appropriate in all circumstances. And again, this is also not language which looks to the ultimate mass redevelopment. Or reconstruction or read adaptive reuse of the mall, but would appear to apply anytime, any kind of application is made. Including an application that seeks to make changes to. Bring in a new tenant in the building. And that's problematic because we will have to deal with it in the context of those applications. So with that, I would like to take a break from speaking, which your planning consultants didn't have the opportunity to do. And turn this over to Mr. Shea who will provide some information with regard to the mall. He will then introduce Mr. Phillips and I will just then show you, if I may. Our recommendation for what we think some minor changes that can mitigate some of the negative impacts we think will come from the language. As it's currently written, including a recommendation, for example, to subdivide the property. So if I may, Mr. Shea, if you can, I don't know what he has to do to identify himself so that you can allow him to be a panelist.
Uh, let's just, I think he is already.
Yep, he's here. I just want to swear you in. Steve, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give tonight's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Steve Shea, S-T-E-V-E, S-H-E-A.
Thank you.
Mr. Shea, good evening. If you could just go, go over your role in the presentation tonight. We're not qualifying you as an expert, correct?
Correct. Yeah, no, I represent Simon Property Group, who manages Newport Center.
Okay, that's fine. Go ahead.
Sure. And is there an ability for me to share my screen here or?
You should be able to. You're on a computer or you're on a mobile device?
No, I'm on a computer.
You should have down on the bottom of the screen a green. Green arrow, green box with an arrow in it says.
Okay, great. Got it. I've just got a few, you know, photos of the mall. I know there's a lot of exhibits posted earlier of.
Sure. And if you could, as you show those photos, please identify them and we'll mark them into evidence.
Yeah, sure.
Mr. Gonchar, let's start marking these. We'll mark them as. Oh, one for purposes of the record. And how many are we going to share?
Sure, I just sort of, I don't know if you can see those updating through. They're just some reference photos of, of the mall.
I've seen three so far.
Today, I see.
This is.
Yeah.
Steve, can you just, we're going to need to mark them. So if you could just identify each one, just say what it is so that we have your description of it to go.
Sure, sure. This first photo is, is a photo that demonstrates three-story volumes and how by its design, the shop's oriented. Interior. The second one is a restaurant which we, in a very selected place, have been able to reach. Both inside and outside in conjunction with putting in a new entry. This is that same view from the outside where the center connects. It's sort of sole connection point to, to the light rail, which otherwise blocks. All through traffic, pedestrian cars, bikes, whatever, to our eastern boundary because the.
Steve, wait one second. See, so number three is the exterior entrance?
Correct.
Okay, next.
On our eastern boundary.
Eastern, right?
And then the fourth one is again a photo of the interior. Demonstrating how the multi-level mall functions. And then more of the same for the fifth one, so.
Okay, so it's also interior of the mall. Okay, the number four, just. For clarity, I'm just going to say interior with. With sign so we can distinguish it from interior in the next one. Okay.
Ready? So as, as background, well, Newport Center is unique in Jersey City and the master plan is it's the only enclosed mall. As mall experts, we deal daily with similar properties throughout our portfolio. We own 13 centers in New Jersey. We're the largest owner of shopping malls in the US with over 200 fantastic properties. And we operate in 37 states and around the globe. So we know shopping centers and we know what it takes to keep mixed-use centers vibrant. I'm here tonight because we're featured prominently in the land use section, particularly in section five. Which speaks to a very eclectic group of sites, all under the general label of large format retail. But none of which share our unique circumstances. And we've made it clear through this process that we have significant concerns. And we believe that the plan, if it's adopted as written, will hinder our ability to adapt and thrive in the future. For context, we're longstanding members of the community and early believers of how great Jersey City would become. We started here in the 1980s and we were built according to a plan that was developed with and approved by the city. With the goal of converting vacant lots and rail yards. Into a multi-level regional mall that would be an economic engine and a springboard for adjacent development. That plan specified multimodal access with direct vehicular ramp off of I-78. Pedestrian passageways through the west deck to link the neighborhoods. To the enclosed mall and a central connection to the light rail, which otherwise blocks our eastern boundary. And we built just that. The project has been successful and our vision and investment has helped spark the success of the Newport area. Our project is home to over 130 individual businesses. And so in large part, I'm speaking for them now, many of which are locally owned. Over 2,000 people earn their livelihoods at Newport Center and we generate over 4 million in real estate taxes. In nearly 11 million in sales tax. Yet the plan portrays us in the large format retail group as a problem that needs fixed. But in fact, we're an economic engine to the city and a hub for our neighborhood. The dramatic recommendations of subdividing our lots, putting streets through the heart of the mall and repurposing our deck. They'll hang on that false premise that online sales has killed bricks and mortar. It's false. It's damaging to the merchants in the mall and the employees who work there and the tax base. Well, it's true, the internet has changed shopping. Nearly all merchants have an omnichannel presence. The shopping, they start on the phone and end with the transaction in the mall or start with trying on items in the mall and end with a click of the mouse. But it's proven that the physical presence of retail is key to the success. COVID, terrible shock to the retail and restaurant business. But our center remains strong. We've got 13 centers in New Jersey and sales now exceed pre-pandemic levels in those 13. We're social creatures and Newport Center is the definition of experiential retail. We are where people come to enjoy a meal with the family, the friends, to see a movie, to do their shopping, visit Santa Claus. Brands have always come and gone. But we're dedicated to Newport Center. We're the leading expert to keeping retail centers on point and we invest heavily in the evolution. We've continually reinvested millions of dollars at the property and we work daily to secure the most desirable and needed merchants. And we've vested alongside countless individual businesses who open at the mall. In recent years, we've converted the blank exterior wall, fronting the light rail. To a main entry. We flanked it with restaurants and it provides a better connection to the east. And that, that's what's in that photo. But much of the mall is internal facing by its nature. And we've invested there too. We've renovated the cinema whose access is strictly from the interior common area. We've brought in state-of-the-art technology and a reseating program. And we've completed a complete overhaul of our internal food hall on the third floor. Newport Center will change. We understand that. That we know what it takes to keep malls vibrant to meet the consumer demands. But we know it also requires flexibility that we heard a lot earlier in the design standards and the municipal cooperation. We have many choices where we can invest our time and our money and we pick Newport Center over and over again because it's been a great community with a bright future. But the mandates restrict adherence to urban design principles. Prudely applied to a vibrant, multi-level closed mall don't help. We've concerns about some specific recommendations in the plan and Paul Phillips, who will take it from here, can speak more specifically. To those concerns and the potential for unintended consequences that can hamper the success of Newport.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Shea. We appreciate your comments.
Sorry, and Paul, if you could raise your right hand. Do you swear any testimony you give today? It's going to be the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
I do.
And for the record, could you state and spell your name, please?
Yes, Paul Phillips, P-H-I-L-L-I-P-S.
Thank you.
Mr. Phillips, good evening. We are qualifying you as a planner, correct?
Yes.
And is your license current in the state of New Jersey tonight?
It is.
Okay, thank you. Qualified.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And good evening. So by way of introduction, my name is Paul Phillips. I am, as I've stated, a licensed professional planner in New Jersey and I'm a principal in the firm known as Phillips Price. Our offices are located just across your border in the city of Hoboken. I have approximately 40 years of practice in New Jersey. And my firm currently advises, in addition to landowners and developers. Several dozen municipalities and boards in the state and our expertise is in the areas of master planning, zoning, redevelopment and affordable housing. Given the hour, Mr. Chairman, I'll try to be brief, but I wanted to follow up on. Merrill and Steve's comments with my own observations regarding the draft master plan. And specifically as it relates to statements and representations and. And specifically as it relates to statements and representations and and recommendations regarding Newport Center. Uh, and with that said, I think probably most importantly, uh, as I read the uh, draft and particularly the sections dealing with what has been described tonight as large format retailing, um, and clearly as expressed in the land use element. Uh, the document seems to sort of presuppose that in the future Newport Center either will or should be subject to certain physical changes or transformations, a number of which are problematic for my client. Uh, and I'll get to that in a in a minute. And also in that vein, uh, Newport Center in the document is characterized together with a number of what I characterize as sort of traditional older open air malls and other retail locations throughout the city, including a number on the west side. Uh, and I say that notwithstanding, at least in my mind, there are there are obvious differences. Uh, so the the plan is advocates a series of very specific and targeted design principles, uh, and they relate uh, to large format retailers generally, but also specifically to Newport Mall. And it's there are also a number of exhibits uh, which highlight some of these recommendations vis a vis Newport Center. I I think the problem is that some of the language and the accompanying exhibits are contrary, actually quite contrary to what we view as a healthy and vibrant Newport Center going forward. And whether they're intended or not, Mr. Chairman, they're they're problematic. Uh, and I also want to say just so that there's no misunderstanding. I I read the document and uh, many of the goals and objectives that I read in the master plan, which pertained to Newport Center are at least in my professional opinion, clearly relevant and worthwhile from an overall planning and design standpoint. Uh, and just to to name a few, you know, improving pedestrian access to the mall, uh, providing for a more inviting pedestrian environment, improving the adjacent streetscape, broadening the list of permitted uses. These are all absolutely worthy objectives and ones which I think my client is in agreement with. However, there are also specific references and recommendations, as you heard both from Merrill and Steve, to extend the street grid from the west through the parking deck and the mall proper and to potentially subdivide the property accordingly. Uh, and in fact, the language that's used in the plan continually states that any or all new development language to that effect should adhere to these design principles. And and that wording, the problem with that wording, it seems pretty clear in terms of intent. And I don't think it conveys the flexibility that your planners and consultants said is the intent of the plan, which was said this evening. Uh, and I say that because as a practical matter, I don't think you could viably extend streets through an established multi-level enclosed mall with common interior access and with all other operational functions, including off-street loading built into that design. And and while there may be opportunities to provide what I think is referenced in the document as additional outward facing businesses, uh, you can do that at the ground level, but you can't realistically do that at the second and third levels. And while we're in agreement that enhancing pedestrian access uh, to the mall and through the mall is a good thing, literally extending the streets through the mall would mean the end of Newport Center as we know it. And that's that's really the concern. And I just want to say one other thing, sort of informationally on that issue is that the document states that extending streets through the property would reestablish the historic street grid. However, Newport Center itself was developed on a former rail yard, which was located actually beyond the terminus of the city's street grid. And also the the light rail actually limits any additional street connections that could extend from the mall to the waterfront. And then and that's basically uh, played a lot in the master plan in terms of this recommendation to extending streets. The the last issue and and Merrill touched on this is that the plan makes some affirmative suggestions that there be that there may be some significant unused parking either within or top of the parking deck, the existing deck. So that there may be some type of public open space that might be provided, but we view that as similarly problematic and and again, notwithstanding the locational context, which we appreciate and understand, the mall does need a sufficient amount of parking to serve its customers. And the actual supply is also very much driven by the demands of tenants. So again, many of these recommendations that I've described occur throughout the document. They're actually in the zoning recommendation section. They're also in the implementation section. And Merrill kind of touched on this and I I would agree. The reason this is such a concern for my client is that, as you know, the master plan is a policy guide for future actions on the part of both the governing body and the planning. So if you had a future development application involving Newport Center that required uh, some type of significant variance relief, or there was a future zoning amendment or future redevelopment plan amendment. Uh, presumably it's going to be subject to the policy directives of this master plan and particularly the land use sale. And those policy directives advocating extending streets and subdividing this property may well have undue consequences for the future of Newport Center as it has existed historically and as it looks to proceed forward, as you've heard from Mr. Shea. So for all those reasons, and and also I think recognizing as Merrill said that that my client's a key stakeholder uh, in the city. Uh, we think it would actually make sense, Mr. Chairman, to take the time to address some of this problematic text and and exhibits so that maybe an acceptable consensus could be reached so that the planning board's happy and my client's happy. And I don't see this as a heavy lift, actually. Um, I I think we need to tidy up and clarify a number of references within the document and I do believe we can get there. And I think we can do it in a way that can convey the uh, language that conveys the flexibility that's been discussed again by the city planners and your consultants this evening. So I thank you very much, Mr. Chair, for your time and I'll turn it back to Merrill at this point.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Phillips. Um, if I could, um, could I get a question from you?
Yeah.
Um, so you you talk about you know, some kind of application with a deviation that this master plan would inhibit somehow. Um. Can you give us an example?
You know, I I, Mr. Chairman, I I anticipated that that might be a a question and and I don't know what future application on behalf of my client, you know, what that holds in store. And I don't know the magnitude of that. While I'm trying and I'm not, I'm not suggesting a minor variance that really is going to.
Of course, I'm I'm not.
Be attacked by a land use settlement policy directive. But there if there was something that was significant and involved what I consider a major variance vis a vis the current development regulations that that govern the use and and of this property. Uh, I I think that, you know, a a board member, a member of the public, uh, an objector could cite the the master plan language and could cite the instances in the master plan where there isn't the language that is meant to convey flexibility, which is really what concerns us, is that there are sections there that it's quite clear that flexibility is not in the wording and the text. That's what concerns me. But perhaps even more importantly, it's it's not so much uh, applications, but it's it's, you know, any future zone change or amendment. Really, which is going to be the guide for a future application that is not consistent with some of this more rigid language in the master plan. And, you know, uh, we don't know how long in the future and who's going to be here and who's going to say how we interpret it. So we're really here to just kind of protect the 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 record, if you will, going forward and and protect our interests and our asset.
Sure. I I'm just, you know, it's escaping my memory over my time on the board when you know, the Newport Mall has really asked for a significant variance outside of maybe a signage variance. And that's, you know, again, that speaks to the intent. If, you know, if your client had some plan that they're thinking about tonight would be the night to talk about it, maybe. Um, I'm I'm not approving a Ferris wheel there. But you know, as we're seeing other other properties change across the country and your clients' properties as well. Um, you know, I don't know how many renovations we've seen out of other Simon properties in the state. I I don't keep track of these things, but I'm sure they're significant. Um, and there's generally, you know, what I'm seeing in the areas, most malls are moving towards an entertainment complex ideal also. Not just the American dream. There's, you know, other malls that are doing a smaller scale entertainment complex.
And we're all on board with that, Mr. Chairman. There's no question.
Of course, I I think it's a great thing. I think it's, you know, a great thing for the future of of malls and retail. Uh, again, I I don't know what kind of large scale variance we'd be talking about that this plan would inhibit and that that's you know, from a an urban planning standpoint, I I'm sure you could appreciate extending pedestrian access towards the waterfront in the future. I I think it should.
As I, as I mentioned, uh, when I reviewed the plan, in my opinion, that's a worthy goal. And I know my my client doesn't have an issue with that. It's literally extending streets through the mall, which is to me is, you know, that that's that's it for the mall and its present physical manifestation.
Agreed. That that I think would be a heavy lift. Um, the pedestrian access, I I certainly think is something that we should be looking for.
Can I, um, can I ask a question with what you're or may I ask after you're done asking my my planner? Go ahead.
Absolutely. Um, so let me close it out. By saying I I come from a time when Garden State Plaza was an outdoor mall. I grew up with that mall being an outdoor mall.
As did I, Mr. Chairman.
Are you always going to date yourself, Chairman?
Let's not talk, let's not talk about what year that was, but you know, that was.
And I'm not going to mention Menlo Park Mall when that was open because I think I'm older than all of you.
I'm I'm above the bridges. I'm above the bridges, born and raised. So, uh, um. So I mean, I have a, you know, I have a nostalgia for an outward facing mall. I I think it, you know, it does so much to bring a pedestrian element to a a mall where and you know, that, let me backtrack for one second and there there is a point. Don't worry. There is a point. Let's say the mall in the future had some kind of residential element on top of it. Where, you know, we had, let's say, a ten-story building where you know, we could reimagine and and this is really thinking outside of the box. And I know I don't want to settle off an alarm here for anybody. But if, you know, that pedestrian element was brought down to the mall as well as in. You know, I think that would be an interesting thing. Um. Again, this is being very, very, very flexible with the zoning. Um, we're nowhere near that point. But.
We're 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 just asking, Mr. Chairman, that the the language reflect what you just articulated, which is flexibility. And we have serious concerns that in a number of instances that flexibility in that language isn't there and that's the cause for our concern.
Okay, very good.
And if I, I'm going to ask my, if you'll admit, I don't know my associate, um, Josh Kudry, because he's the one who knows how to put these things up. I don't. But I am going to say that using your example, Mr. Chairman, there is a provision on page one thirty four that says all public facing building edges and any frontage on internal streets should be treated, adapted to engage pedestrians and extend the city's street grid to the west. That's not flexible. That's mandatory length. It says all should be. That's problematic because there are second and third story building faces that you can't do that. You can't do it reasonably. And this language can be cited by someone to say if you're not doing that, you're contrary to the intent. And frankly, I wish we only had to do negative criteria for major variances. Unfortunately, we have to do them for all variances. So whether it's a variance resulting from tenant fit up or some modification even to make an outside entrance as we did with Cheesecake Factory. This can be pointed to. It doesn't provide any flexibility. It says all. And that's not practical. There are back of the 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 mall operations. There's loading areas. There are refuse areas that you don't want on exterior facing streets. That's the kind of thing that is of concern to us. And if we may, if Josh can put up, we think some of these are relatively minor means of adapting them to reflect the flexibility. I would point you to page one thirty six under a diagram of our building. If you could go to page one thirty six with the diagram.
Okay, so these are, these are modified.
Yeah, there with just our notes.
Okay, so we could, let's mark these as well.
Very good. We have, Josh, how many total we have? Well, if you could go back to the beginning so we can show them, we are starting on.
So counsel, if I can, for purposes of the record, we are up to oh, two.